Number three, which is Palmer Hill Road and number six, which is the Whole Foods.
And number six, and which is Mr. Fox on?
Those two, 269 Palmer Hill and Whole Foods.
On Mr. Fox?
Yes, everything else is Mrs. Raymer.
Thank you. Okay.
That better? Okay. Just to brief you all from where we are, or where we are now, from where we were, I came here earlier in the summer. We had a meeting in this room with a lot of the residents in Eastern Greenwich, and we heard comments, and we have since had a meeting with the Subcommittee of the P&amp;Z to go through those and make some decisions about revisions that we're going to make. And as a result of that, and what you have before you is largely, I think, what has been before you for the last few months. We have been making targeted changes throughout as we respond to public comments. So the key areas that we've changed as a result of those comments, we have added some language on sustainable development, on green infrastructure, making clear the distinction between what's considered natural green infrastructure, so trees and grass and things that are already here, in addition to engineered green infrastructure, which is sort of man-made things, which, both of which are valuable in terms of stormwater, but also making clear that natural green infrastructure is clearly a very strong positive for the town and should be preserved when at all possible. We have added a lot of language about Haven Meyer Park. That was something we heard loud and clear at the last public meeting. A lot of residents felt that it hadn't gotten quite the attention that it deserved and that the plan should recognize the historic value of Haven Meyer Park as a post-war planned suburb neighborhood. So we did that. We've added some language on the DeLuca property and the opportunities along the Mayanis. And I know that was something we spent a lot of time with Nancy on, is increasing public access along the Mayanis, both on the Eastern Greenwich side and what's considered the Koskob side, and some opportunities there. And we did spend a lot of time with the Subcommittee and staff on the action plan. That was another comment we heard at the public meeting. What are we going to do? Where are we going to go from here? How are we going to implement these recommendations? So we really fine-tuned the action plan, streamlined it, and really focused, it's a lot shorter now, and it's focused on the real action-oriented items. There were some items that were more support other departments of what they're already doing, support the implementation of previous plans. We still have those in there, and they're mentioned, but they're not in the action plan. The action plan is really focused primarily on P&amp;Z-related items that you have a direct involvement with. And we've also added some language about how priorities might be determined year-to-year, that the responsibility really will be with staff, with Katie, using a process that's similar to the implementation of the master plan, the P.O.C.D. So I think that's a nutshell of the changes. Some of them were, you know, more clarifying texts, typos, that type of thing, but I think we've captured the major changes. So I'm happy to take questions, if there are any.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Peter Alexander. I'm a landscape architect planner, and I want to make sure you guys understand, I'm really excited that the words "village district" actually showed up, and it looks like we might get them. I want to take my hats off to Katie for the number of meetings that has gone into this, and it seems like you really listened. I wanted to give you a quick update. Are any of you from Old Greenwich, by any chance? Oh, good, you don't have to recuse yourselves. I went to the first meeting, and I wanted to point out that a plan that we had in place would put a north-south axis barrier beach kind of input at Stamford's Breakwaters. They're east-west. This is north-south. Since then, the Army Corps of Engineers has identified the location right adjacent to where we are and is very excited about this. We're in a group called the Friends of Greenwich Coast, and along with the Army Corps of Engineers, the EPA, DEEP, Woods Hole Group, and the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, we really think we might be able to pull this one off. And I'm going to inform the RTM members about this, and I want to give you a copy of my sheets begging for your thoughts and potential endorsement. But the planning that you've gone through, you know, it's urban-based, and I understand all the little checks have to go off, and the paragraph's precise and so forth, but I'm very excited that we're getting to the village side of things, and this is a potential to protect Todd's Point and Old Greenwich. One of the unusual things is that from the end of Long Island Sound, the race, Block Island, the ocean, there's only a narrow, four-mile-wide area that can catch the waves coming the entire distance. And that would be broken down by this barrier to protect Old Greenwich and Todd's Point. The hurricane Sandy, which wasn't really a hurricane, it was a storm, locked in virtually at east for almost 30 hours. The storm surge predictions were all wrong. None of the computers worked correctly, but I think people in Old Greenwich would, and people who love Todd's Point, would say that it's too bad it wasn't better protected. So here's a shot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll pass it down. Thank you. All right, thank you. Any further comments? Yes, sir.
I have to say, I like the plan. There are a couple just comments on reading through it. Page 33, where it says summarize bulk, I think, to me at least, the whole issue of bulk, it's a summarization of the FAR, because, I mean, as you all obviously know, that you can build a 3,500-square-foot house, or whatever the requirement, it can have seven-foot ceilings or it can have 28-foot ceilings. It doesn't really matter, so it's not really bulk. So I think that just, I think the word "bulk" really should be out of there, because it's not appropriate.
What is your name, sir?
Oh, it's Jan Tolheim.
I'm sorry, just question, page 33 of the plan, not of the agenda, right? There's a little confusion.
No, no, no. Page 30, yeah, this is, I'll reference, because I just read through it. I looked at it online, I didn't print it out.
Okay.
So I just referenced the pages on the plan itself.
Okay.
At least the way it appeared from the town website.
Okay, so table four and five summarize they allow bulk, that's what you're talking about?
Right. And it's really more the idea that it's bulk, and I don't think it's bulk.
Right.
So that was that. Then top of one, the lighting proposal for Old Greenwich, I think unless the power lines are buried, it's really a waste, a real waste of money. I do like 43, on page 43, that the power lines behind the buildings, because I think the positive part there is that putting the power underground in the village itself is difficult because of the high water and the transformers and things like that. So that kind of adds a complexity to realistic implementation of putting it underground. And I went to a number of the meetings, and there really was a big thing to try and get these power lines underground. And so I think that, or out of the street, because if you really look at it, it's pretty bad. And then on that, too, I think the unfortunate part, and they're paving, they're redoing the sidewalks on Old Greenwich, it seems like there's less and less room for trees. And so I like that proposal with losing those forest parking spaces past the traffic light and possibly having something green there. But a little bit more green, a little bit more tree, it just, I think we've lost a lot of old trees to plant them. Then page 51, just an observation, having had kids in school, but, you know, they, people complain about the traffic at schools. If you look at what the buses, how the buses are so underutilized, and all the parents are chauffeuring their kids to school, and I don't know if it's a disservice to the children as well in the long run. Top of 55, the sidewalk recommendations. I think the part that you get a lot of pushback on the sidewalks are the property owners that will then have to shovel the snow. So you are kind of putting a burden on the property owners that they need to, so either they may be elderly, they can't afford it, people are away on vacation, so on and so forth. And in some ways, that should then become the responsibility of the community, the neighborhood or whatever, to shovel the snow.
I'm sorry to make this comment, but we've had a number of meetings already.
Yeah, no, and I missed one earlier, but I went to the number of different neighborhood, I actually went to the Olgrish one and the North Mayanis one. So I'll be done in a second, but I just think it's important for...
We'll note your comments.
For, so I think the thing is, if one can kind of remove that burden from the homeowner, that their response for clearing the snow, you have situations where the plow plows the snow back onto where people have shoveled it, too. So that's a frustrating part of it. So, and then if you lose the utility of the sidewalk for a short period of time of year, so be it, but you have the use of it for the rest of the year. So I think that's, you know, and then trees are replaceable from the standpoint of not moving the, not doing the sidewalk, and the trees need to be replanted anyway. So, and I apologize that I missed the meeting earlier.
No apologies necessary. We'll take into consideration your report. We're pretty close to the final document, we're going to vote on it tonight.
Right. And then the one last thing, page 72, I think there should have been stronger language for encouraging Phil in the forced elevation zones, so the flood zones where people are forced to raise their houses. Because if you go down in those neighborhoods, it's going downhill, you know, and there's, if you look at it objectively, you think, okay, these houses are all up, eventually the road could be higher. So as far as a long-term plan, if that's taken into consideration, then all of a sudden now you have the garages down underneath, and now you can't build the road up eventually and kind of bring it back up again, so.
Thanks for your comments. Would anybody else like to talk? Okay. Motion, please.
Katie, the changes, should these be read into the record? The five changes that are, that are just typos and things?
Yes. Right. What you're...
I want to read it anyway.
Sure, sure. This is on the staff report on page 10 of the agenda. These are actually comments from DPW. I should also note that I had met with all of the applicable department heads on the action plan, because this is a plan that we need to do together as a town. It's not something that planning and zoning has total control over, and so that's why it's so critical that we have the buy-in from all the other departments, and sort of like to just thank them publicly now, because they attended meetings and have been very generous with their time to make sure that the action plan is something that can be implemented. So all of them, and I'm talking about the Conservation Department, Parks and Rec Department, Department of Public Works, and the Tree Warden, have all signed off on the plan, so to speak. So Jim Michael, who is the, now he's the Deputy Commissioner of Public Works, at the time he was a chief engineer, had these comments at the critical moment on the final plan. So on page six, he suggests adding Beany Park sediment study to the list of the previous studies. On page 52, this is a section talking about the improvements to the train station parking in Old Greenwich. It discusses 89 spaces, and he suggests saying 89 plus or minus, because if you recall in the planning and zoning approval, there was talk about adding some landscaping, so that may adjust that number slightly. So just to make sure we're not tied there. On page 53, it's pedestrian and bicycle circulation. The last sentence refers to covered bicycle racks, and we want to just take the word "covered" out, since that's not supported by the Director of Parking. I apologize, she should have been in that list also, I'm sorry. That's Rita Azrelion. Also on page 53, sidewalk infrastructure, the first sentence there, the reads that the town, and we use the word "exploring," the, we should use "pursuing," and that has to do with some of the sidewalk improvements, and using the word "pursuing," and I think, Ms. Tolheim, you had kind of hit it on the head, that it's something that the town is exploring would be a better word to use there because of some of the issues associated with sidewalks. First of all, they are controversial in some instances, not everybody wants them. Also, there, they, there's a priority system in town that affects the whole town, so not just this area of the town. Lastly, on page 66, talking about sidewalks, he suggested in the sentence that reads, although the town's policy is to use concrete for full sidewalks, he suggests adding "in business zones," because they use asphalt sidewalks in the residential zones in most instances. So he suggested making that change also.
Does that cover it all?
As amended, I would move the approval of the Eastern Greenwich Neighborhood Plan.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. Might add one other thing, and one other thing that, this is the third of the special area investigations and examinations we've done as a result of the planning, the conservation, and development. The next one will be Glenville Pemberwick. Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is a final coastal site plan to construct a new dwelling, Zero Westview Place.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Bristol, representing the applicant, property owner, Brusana Colangelo. I'm here with project architect and the owner's husband, Vince Colangelo, as well as project engineer, Tony DeAndrea, who we all know. I guess I just wanted to start off with a quick statement. Before we get into the particulars of the application, I guess, I wanted to advise the commission that taking all of the department and commission questions and comments, et cetera, that I've received by way of the staff report, by way of attending the briefing, as well as the neighbor comments, and I was able to discuss with my client, and we are working with, toward a revised design that addresses some of these concerns. I just wanted to get that out of the way first and foremost. We just literally started talking about some options and how we can explore redesigning the house and development of that property. So we don't have anything to show you, obviously, it's too late to get anything, anyway, but I wanted to let you know that we are doing that, so that to the extent that the current application shows, the current design of the house, just know that it will be changing sooner than later. Again, I don't have a timeframe yet, but it will be soon, and we do plan to obviously submit and give you a design that we hope addresses some of the most, some of the biggest concerns of the commission, as well as the neighbors.
Did you bring boards with you?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I think, given that, I think it's still worth making sure that the priorities we expressed and what the neighbors...
Yes.
...have expressed in their letters, that we do have a chance to make sure that those get communicated.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what I anticipated, that we'd have a discussion about these topics.
Mr. Bristol?
Sure.
Proceedurally, are you intending to postpone going to ZBA because you're going to redesign? Or what would you be...
I would imagine so. I mean, I don't know how quickly, again, we're literally just over the past day or so, we've been talking about this. I anticipate that we'd probably postpone, given, I think we're tentatively scheduled for the 23rd, although I haven't seen a notice. I think it'd probably be a little bit tight to come out with a redesign and get it into the board and, you know, and have it circulated before that time, so I'd anticipate that it would be, that it would move, hopefully not too much. But yes, I do anticipate it being moved.
Perhaps, I think, just to pursue that a little further, what might make sense is for you to come back to this commission first and then to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I anticipated that that would be a case. I mean, for a project like this, I understand that the commission would want to see it, I think, before going to PZBA, and if we're redesigning the development, designing the house, I think that would make perfect sense.
Let me just ask a broad question.
Sure.
Do you anticipate in this redesign, a reduction to the number of retaining walls?
Yes, that's...
And the redesign of the project, which will fit the building more closely to the landforms and not impose the artificial, artificial landforms, basically, on it?
Well, I mean, as we, I think it's well-recognized that the topography, again, is a little...
Steep.
It's steep, it's a little, it's dramatic. So, you know, we're going to have to do something, but yes, part of the design is to lower it and sort of sink it into the hill bit, and sort of hopefully, I mean, it will definitely reduce the number of retaining walls, and as to what those configurations or how many. It's still going to be a couple walls. I mean, I can't say that it won't be, just by the nature of the site.
Further such things as the deck, the cantilevered deck, which is quite a bit above the, it isn't cantilevered, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Just checking.
You're right. The, it would be nice if it was, we could call it falling water, but it's not, so. That's quite an imposition on the site in terms of its height, above not only the retaining walls, but above the existing grade. So there are other places to put pools, that, is that the extent of the...
That will be included. Again, it's the overall design and, called situation of the house vertically as well as horizontally, and the outside living space, as a necessary result of that, will be redesigned as well. Again, I can't tell you exactly what that is, but that's the intent of our discussions now, given the, again, given all the comments that we've had.
Still on my thunder, so.
Well, I mean, it's...
Regardless, the, well, I think that's the thing, is I'd like to go through not just the big pieces.
I think there's a lot of people here that are interested.
Sure.
Maybe after you hear from all the neighbors, and then we can just give you what are top...
Is there, aside from the practical concerns of, you know, of neighbors, of the site in general, is there any other elements that we need to discuss before we talk about the practical ramifications of such...
Can we speak to environmental analyst's report?
Yes. Yes, I have.
The, okay, I mean, we can tell you, we were really worried about what you're going to, if you use less fill, obviously not a problem, not as big a problem, but very concerned about the number of trucks that were going to have to come up that narrow road with all that fill compression of what Mr. DeAndrea has designed as the area where he's going to put in the retention units, landscaping of the disturbed soils to stabilize them. It goes on, I mean, those are the things. So I think let's, I would like to hear from the neighbors, and then we can just recap.
Could I just...
Hit some of the essentials besides the...
Well, I think that, as we discussed yesterday, that logistics is a concern to the commission, and I'm sure it's a big concern to the neighbors. Having a very tight site, logistically, how are you going to construct it? And we need a narrative of that.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
And I think if you do your homework and put it out in a way that people can understand, I think it would be very helpful. And my concern about letting neighbors speak tonight, this isn't the plan.
But they're here.
And I would hate to get them to discuss their issues with the plan when you're considering major modifications.
But their concerns could, and my point of view would be that their concerns should be heard, even if it's on a plan that may go away, just so that the next plan incorporates their comments. And also, to be honest, they've made the effort to be here, so I'd like to hear from them, just, you know.
Fine, fine.
If I could just, I just wanted to make a couple comments, and only, going to the points you both raised, I guess first, we do intend to submit a landscape plan, so that's going to be forthcoming. And we'd certainly be agreeable to a construction phasing plan as well. We understand that's a concern.
Exactly.
A detailed phasing plan, we think is certainly appropriate.
And an SNE, very detailed.
Did all you people understand what's going on here the last couple minutes?
Yeah, yeah, they got it.
Did you all understand that?
But I wanted to...
It's on top of it.
I wanted to bring up those couple points, so I agree with that. And in terms of the neighbors, I agree with...
Detailed SNE plan, really detailed.
I think it's a good idea. Who would like to speak? Come on up.
Okay, we'll finish with you later.
Clearly, you're going to be giving us a full extension, Mr. Bristol.
I'm sorry?
Clearly, you're giving us a full extension.
Yes, yeah, we'll give you a extension.
Thank you.
Or, you know, the other thing you could do is actually you could convert to preliminary. That would, can he do that easily?
Let's get a new one.
That's what I mean. If he converts to preliminary, he could totally change, he's changing the plan completely, so, whatever. Hello, Mr. Coppola.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. My name is Mario Coppola. I practice law at Birch &amp; Moses &amp; Devlin with offices in Milford, Westport, and Norwalk, Connecticut. I'm here this evening on behalf of a group of property owners who live in the area surrounding the subject property. All of them are very concerned, and at this point, strongly opposed to the application as has been proposed so far. A report was entered into the record by Trinkus Engineering dated September 9th. I trust that all of you have received that and hopefully had an opportunity to review it. The group has retained Steve Trinkus from Trinkus Engineering as its third-party expert engineer to review this application. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it here this evening, because he has another zoning hearing in another town, but he will be here at future meetings. Since he's not here, I just wanted to briefly highlight some, I would say, five main points from his report, which I think are also helpful for this commission, and maybe even for the applicant, to consider in, with regard to any revisions that are being proposed for the application.
Have these, have these have been forwarded to the applicant?
The, the report was submitted into the record...
Yeah, I sent it yesterday.
Yeah, I presume he's had a chance to review it. So, one, the stormwater management plans are not in compliance with the town's Stormwater Management Manual. On page four and five of the Trinkus report, Mr. Trinkus cites nine issues with the proposed stormwater management plans. I hope that the commission, town engineer and other staff require the applicant provide appropriate responses to these issues raised with regard to the stormwater management plans. One important issue cited by Mr. Trinkus regarding the stormwater management is that there are no provisions to handle surface water or groundwater above multiple levels of retaining walls on the site. As it currently is proposed, the surface water will simply cascade over the top of each of the retaining walls and onto neighboring residential properties. Certainly, that's a concern for the neighbors who abut the subject property. Mr. Trinkus concluded that it is not appropriate, because all the stormwater generated on the parcel must be managed so as not to cause a nuisance condition on a downgradient property, to which there are a few here that would be significantly adversely affected by virtue of stormwater runoff. Number two, the Greenwich Stormwater Management Manual adopted low-impact development approaches to minimize impacts to the natural environment, address water quality issues, and runoff volume reduction issues. As you could see from Mr. Trinkus's resume, which was an exhibit that's attached to the report that you received, he's one of the leading experts in the state of Connecticut with regard to low-impact and sustainable development. He's regularly retained by various municipalities, in particular in southern Connecticut, as an expert to review these types of applications on behalf of various boards and commissions. Mr. Trinkus concluded that the application is definitely not in compliance with the low-impact development standards set forth in the Greenwich Stormwater Management Manual, and he states seven reasons to support this conclusion on page six of his report. I hope that you please, you know, review those reasons and take those into consideration when reviewing any further changes to the proposed application. Number three, Mr. Trinkus concluded that the proposed erosion control plan violates the Greenwich Stormwater Management Manual and the Connecticut DEP 2002 Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control. Mr. Trinkus stated five reasons to support this conclusion on page six and seven of his report. I hope that you please address those erosion control plan issues with the applicant. Number four, there's insufficient information on the plans regarding the numerous proposed retaining walls. Furthermore, Mr. Trinkus questions whether it's even feasible to construct some of the walls as proposed without adversely affecting adjacent properties. So one issue he raised is, how does the applicant propose to construct certain walls? I believe he cited one in the area immediately adjacent to the north and approximately two-thirds of the western property line. It's his position that you can't construct that wall without actually... that you can't construct that wall without actually going onto the neighbor's property and that if this commission, and his suggestion is that this commission should require as a condition of approval that the applicant has an easement from that property owner and evidences it to the commission prior to granting an approval for the construction of that wall. Finally, with regard to the Trinkus report, on page five of the report, he concludes that the application does not comply with the green area requirement of the zoning regulations as set forth in section 26.1 of your regulations. The applicant is claiming that they are providing 58.5% green area for the property and the regulations require that they provide at least 50%. Mr. Trinkus calculated that the applicant is actually only providing 10.1% of green area with regard to the proposed plans. And he goes into a detailed explanation in his report as to how he calculated those numbers. Lastly, I would just like to cite some standards for this commission to think about applying with regard to this application, especially as there's further changes to it. If I may, Mr. Chairman, just briefly cite those for you. Six dash, I'm sorry, six dash 15A, in determining whether to approve an application for a site plan, the commission shall take into consideration the public health, safety, and general welfare and the comfort and convenience of the general public. Six dash 15 subsection A3, the protection of environmental quality and the preservation enhancement of property values. Section six dash 15 subsection A3A, adequacy of open spaces, screening, and buffering. Six dash 15 subsection A3B, the location, height, and materials of walls and planting so as to ensure harmony with adjacent development. Section six dash 15 subsection A3D, the preservation of natural attributes and major features of the site such as highly erodible areas, historic structures, major trees, and scenic views both from the site and on tour over the site. Section six dash 15 subsection A3G, the provision of adequate storm and surface water drainage facilities to properly drain the site while minimizing downstream flooding, yet not adversely affect water quality. And finally, section six dash 15 subsection A4A, a design in harmony with existing and/or proposed neighborhood appearance shown by the exterior appearance of the buildings, their location on the site, and their relationship to the natural terrain and vegetation and to other buildings in the immediate area. At this point, based on what's been proposed, we believe that all of those standards are violated by the proposed plans to date. So, we hope that your commission takes these provisions, your regs into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Who would else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Oof Lindahl. I'm at 21 Westview Place, which is right above this very steep lot. And I know you're concerned with the landfill as we are. And I just wanted to cite an example that when the Fininol was developed behind us, they erased the land and put in landfill and retaining walls. And while that was happening, our basement was flooded. So, we eventually decided to renovate our house and ask for a small variance at the back, five feet in a small triangle, which would really not have changed the neighborhood at all. And none of the neighbors actually opposed, but we were denied. So, instead, we had to build another house with a bigger footprint within the variances. And we had no variances that we had to ask for. So, I think that this issue with the trucks too is a serious issue because since we are right in front of that property, they will have to actually do all that work right in front of our building. And we will have to put up a fence and close our driveway because we don't want our property destroyed or our grass destroyed or the driveway pushed down by these, I think perhaps as much 100 trucks bringing in landfill and big rocks and whatever else they need to bring in for building these walls and landfill things. So, as we do that, I know that many of the other neighbors here will do the same thing. So, the ball will kind of be kicked down the street all along Westview Place that doesn't have a turnaround place because it's a narrow deficient street. So, it will affect all these neighbors who are on our street. And of course, also below because of the mud that might come down in the water and so forth. And there are many other issues, but I want to make this short since we now know that they will take some of this into consideration. And I just like to ask all our neighbors to stand up because I don't think all of them will speak. Could you all stand up, please?
You're a very good-looking group.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board.
And a good size for a small street.
I think it's, things are pretty clear in terms of direction we're going, we're following. Anybody else who would like to speak is welcome to do so.
Hello, my name is David Del Monte. I live at Eight Fitch Lane, right at the lower left-hand property where this is going to be built. One of my main concerns is the water because just like Oof just said, when Fininol was developed, I always had water problems in my basement. When there was work being done up on Westview, my basement flooded. I replaced carpets. I replaced hardwood floors. And I'm sure with this one being right next to me, where's the water going to go? And for all the other reasons that when Mario was talking and everyone else, I have a lot of concerns. We all have a lot of concerns. But my probably main concern is looking up at this delightful tower from my property and the water. Because my basement is only flooded when people were doing work up there. And this being my neighbor now, I would almost bet the farm that we're going to have water problems again. Thank you very much.
Do you have some here, Anna? We'll take them. Why don't you, you better pull the mic down quite a bit.
Hi, my name is Vivian Shabline. I live at Six Heinz Lane. And for those of you who have been around for a while, I live in Zip Roddy's old house. Zip Roddy, Maurice Roddy's old house. He was the director, director of Public Works.
Oh, okay.
Maurice Roddy. He was the original veteran and then the first owner.
Oh, he was the original veteran. Cool.
An incredibly nice guy. I'm a senior citizen. I've been in that house for over 30 years and in town for over 42. I'm in a butter, both laterally north, you can, is this not doing its thing? Okay. You can see that on the first map and downhill from the proposed project. My property cuts from Heinz through to Westview, as do all of the lots on the east side of Heinz and Cary. So, you can see that on the second map.
I'm going to hand the attorney for the applicant the tree thing.
Sure.
That's okay. I'm looking at Richard's stuff anyway.
When the owner of Seven Heinz Lane bought his property in 1998 and prior to the lot split, he clear-cut the entire lot, taking down about 40 trees. The property line that I share with Lot 10B on Westview is totally treed, as is my entire lot. I had the property line staked and pinned, and then I hired an arborist to inventory the trees and evaluate the potential damage to those on and near the lot line that would be inflicted by the proposed construction. The arborist was recommended to me by Bruce Spayman, the tree warden in Greenwich. And you have a copy of the report. The report states that any disturbance of soil can impact the roots, such as the construction of retaining walls on the property line and relocation of the storm drain closer to the property line. There would be damage to the roots of trees 16 feet off the property line because the drip line of these large trees extends over the property line. So, it's going all the way. And I have, as you can see from the report, I have some huge trees about 16 feet in from the property line. These trees stabilize the hill behind my house and absorb rainwater and runoff and also provide privacy for me. I want to preserve this environment, especially next to an oversized, under-drained concrete compound. And I just like living, breathing trees. If I wanted to live without trees next to a structure blocking my sunlight and reaching seven stories above me, I'd move back to New York City. Okay, the retaining walls. The retaining walls will be 30 feet from my kitchen windows, looming over me. The surface area of massive and numerous walls is not counted in the green area and coverage calculations. These wide stepped configurations will create a waterfall onto my property as there is no provision for drainage of the water on the over 420 square feet of surface area of the walls. I mean, they're absolutely huge because they're 15 inches wide and there are 370 some odd feet of them, the way it was configured. So, I'm assuming that will change. Assuming that the town is going to allow some kind of construction that might take place on the lot, there is no provision for town inspection during construction. What could possibly go wrong with over 1,000 cubic yards of fill? That's 67 dump trucks full if it starts to rain, if we get snow melt, a hurricane, mudslides downhill. According to Scott Marucci, who is one of the town engineers, I believe, the town of Greenwich does not inspect during construction. Let me just get my notes. You're going to get something very weird out of my mouth. The inspection is done by the engineer who submitted the plans. So, please read the Trinkus Engineering Report, who is paid by the owner architect, has their interests in mind. That is like letting a professional baseball player supervise their own steroid test. Seriously. Why doesn't the town inspect? Additionally, the abutters and the neighbors are not notified of the review of the full commission or even that the application has been referred to the full commission. This agenda item was not in the Greenwich time. It's only the continuations that were in the Greenwich time.
Okay, of course.
It's sheer accident that I found out about it. And that was because I was in the PNC office and I spoke to Bob Seal and said, "What's happening?" And he said, "It's going up to the full commission." I'm like, "What does that mean?" This system benefits the owners and developers at the expense of the neighboring residents. It needs to be changed with regard to both notification and transparency. I understand that it's difficult to visualize this situation without actually seeing the site. I don't know if the commission takes field trips, but if you do, please come out and see what we are talking about. It's literally eye-opening.
Ma'am, I think every single one of us sitting here has walked.
Thank you.
I think, I think I speak for all of us that we have looked at it. We've walked your street. You've seen us this week. We've been on Fitch. We've been on Heinz.
And I welcome you onto my property. There is a gate. Feel free to come in. The lady from the Conservation Commission didn't find me in my nightgown.
[laughing]
Because my kitchen is all windows, but you can see it very, very clearly from the back of my kitchen, which is a stone wall that was put in originally when they built Nyans Village. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
She's tiny. Hi, my name is Patricia Carr, and I'll be very brief. I have a unique perspective in that I owned a house on 31 Westview Place. And now I'm living in a house on Cary Road, 12 Cary. And we just finished the construction project. And my point is that we've, I've lived on two deficient streets. And on Westview itself, I've been there through storms and emergency trucks that actually have to go backwards up the hill so that they can plow and then move the snow forward. So, a deficient street is challenging just in and of itself. And Cary Road, same thing. Our house that we just finished building, we stayed within the footprint. We stayed within the FAR and we did not require any variance. A construction project in and of itself is challenging, but I feel very strongly that the tools we have in place should stay that way for a very good reason. And I believe all the neighbors have voiced their concern on this. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're on Westview though, right?
Cary Road. I moved. I used to live on Westview and then I moved to Cary.
On the snow removal on Westview, one of the letters said that the snow goes to the empty, to the undeveloped lots. Is that?
It goes where it goes. Wherever they can find the place to put it. My kids used to make a ramp and climb up and jump off and snowboard off of it. So, it's backbreaking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks? Were any, you want to make any final comment?
I guess I just would make a couple of things. I guess first of all, in terms of drainage and, and problems of construction, alleged problems of construction, everything else, I guess I just wanted to ensure the neighbors, and I think everyone recognizes this, that these plans are vetted by the DPW engineering. And we certainly have a very well-known, very good engineer on board that everyone knows and has done hundreds of projects in town. Certainly the intent to do everything right in order to avoid any impacts, drainage or otherwise, into adjacent properties. And I guess in terms of procedural stuff, I'm happy to give you an extension if that's what you'd like.
And if you could keep in touch with us as to when you, when the revised plan will be ready, because I do think that the commission would want to insist that you come here before you go to.
No, certainly, that would be the intent. So, I mean, I'll follow up with, who is, Bob, I'm sure was the reviewer. I'll follow up with Mr. Seal.
Sorry?
Do they date here on this one?
Yeah, he's going to give the extension to December.
Yes.
Mr. Bristol.
Did I miss anybody, by the way, who would like to speak before? If I have, I'm sorry.
Sorry, but we didn't see those people.
Hi, my name's Melissa Mentoc. I live at 15 Westview Place. And I don't, for the sake of not being repetitive, because you've heard many of the complaints that we all share. I agree with what our attorney has said, the findings in the engineer's report. And back to your comment about the snow removal, it is pushed to the side because there is no one occupying the other side of the street. And our road is very deficient. It's very narrow. There really is no room for us to pass one another, especially if emergency vehicles need to come up the street. Appreciate your time. And we'll look forward to hearing the.
Thank you.
New plans.
Thank you.
Did we miss anybody else?
We were going to have our attorney ask for notification for when the new plans are.
We understand.
We would like to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Folks, we're going to leave this open, as you noticed, okay? Thank you for, oh, did you?
I had, I would like to address some comments to Mr. Bristol for sort of guidance.
Sure.
Sure.
Mr. Bristol.
Yes.
The drainage, there is less than the 25-foot required separation between your rain garden and your retain, your second drainage system. I don't recall exactly what it was when I read that. It's become a bit of a habit before us that test pits are not done before we see an application. And I think that's inappropriate. I think the fact, if the property is inaccessible, I'm sure you can find a way to do test pits so that we know what the drainage is.
For that, I'll defer to.
I'll respond to that. The fact of the matter is the engineering department recognized that the drainage report is acceptable and some well-done drainage design for this site. In response to the neighbors concerned about drainage, the fact is on this design, the way we've done it, we're able to intercept all the water, retain it as required by the drainage manual, and then discharge the excess into the drain pipe which goes down under control. The reason the test pits were not done to date was simply because the edge of this property is held up by a guardrail. And if you wanted us to take the guardrail down, we can certainly do that. But while we're working with the engineering department, they recognize that everything that's being done on that property is being done in fill. So, everything that we propose will work because we know what the material is that will be going in. So, we can go in there and take down the guardrail, get a highway permit for it, and dig the site to prove what we know is the fact.
But Mr. DeAndrea, isn't it the case that there's often a surprise?
There's only a surprise if we don't understand the topography. And what we're doing here is adding only 1,000 yards of material. And that's basically a septic system. And we're bringing in select material that we know has the permeability that's required. we're bringing in select material that we know has the permeability that's required for the treatment of the water before it's detained and then ultimately discharged into the drain that runs through the property.
Are you going to fix the lack of twenty-five-foot separation in the front yard?
Sometimes you can't, and while there are guidelines in the drainage manual, the engineer, that's myself, has the opportunity to discuss those things. We don't have to have a cookie cutter approach to everything because we understand how the soils work and where the water will go. I'll remind the commission of the design that they approved on Thirty Field Point Circle, which involved six retaining walls, much more significant than this. And what you approved, with the Engineering Department approval, was the installation of drains and galleries right above those walls. And the water was designed then to percolate down through that soil, through the six walls, and ultimately, my client, my suggestion allowed them to pick up the water at the bottom and take it away into an existing drain. That's basically what this proposal is: treat the water in the rain garden, discharge it to the galleries for detention, then ultimately discharge to the storm drain that runs through our property with no easement. It's a good design.
Mr. DeAndrea, as long as you stood up, if I could ask you, have you seen the conservation comments?
Yes.
Just two things. Could you comment on the issue of the sedimentation and erosion control plan being outside of the property lines?
I don't exactly know what she means by that, but this particular design would have to be implemented from the top...
Yes.
Down, okay? So, you'll start with your low walls first, and you'll work your way up if this proposal were to have gone forward.
You're gonna work from the bottom up, or the...
You have to start from the top and work your way down, and build your walls up the hill. So, you're building basically detention basin and isolation basin as you work your way up the hill. Yes, this is a unique site with unique topography, and it's not to say, in spite of what Mr. Trinkas would suggest, that you can't build this site, because you certainly can. And by designing the walls later, not now, we will design them with either modular block design so that you don't have to have a massive footing.
I don't think anybody here is suggesting that you can't build the site. I think the request is that you work more with the existing topography rather than...
Understood. And that's the architect's design, the architect's responsibility now, and his prerogative was to present this house the way he thought it should be designed for this property. And now he's suggesting that there are other ways to do it, and he will investigate that and will continue with the design. When he finishes his redesign, I don't think you're going to see significant difference in the drainage proposal that we have, because that's necessary to accommodate whatever impervious areas on there. And the soils that we have identified generally in that area are suitable with our design as proposed.
May I ask you one question about the retaining walls? There's only a sketchy section on the architect's drawings about the retaining walls and how they...
Yes.
How do you stabilize those walls that are being built on fill and they're not going down to, or do those walls end up going down to...
When the structural engineers get involved with the retaining walls, and you'll notice on our plans, we don't design the structural walls, never claimed to have done those, but we've also worked on many designs where we have successfully implemented modular block walls, which are common. You'll see one that's going in to handle tremendous amount of parking and railroad activity down near old Greenwich train station. It's the same type of design construction.
No, but I'm wondering, is that supported on fill? That was my question.
Well, they wouldn't be supported on fill. You'd have to get down to your virgin material, and then you build a relatively shallow footing based on that, and then the tiebacks control the design.
Is your footing in stone?
Usually, on the modular block, you can use basically a porous footing founded on virgin material.
Yeah.
And they're very good and efficient, then they're tied back with mesh maybe fifteen or twenty feet in some cases, or maybe three or four feet in others.
That wasn't clear from the architect's drawings.
Correct. They have not been fully fleshed out, that's true.
Okay.
One other comment I just had, Mr. Bristol, if you could just comment on some specifics, because we've heard, yeah, we've heard that you're gonna do a redesign, but could you just enumerate exactly some of those things, like the building height, the walls, the green space, the FAR, anything?
No, I literally can't, only because I've literally just started that discussion with client. You know, we had the briefing yesterday afternoon, and after doing so, I had some discussions with client, and we're talking about it conceptually, so I don't have any details now, but again, the intent is to work it into the slope a bit more, reduce the walls and sort of lower its profile in order to take the comments we've received to heart.
Thank you.
Mr. Bristol, two more things.
Sure.
The plan contemplates being closer to the road than is the rule for this zone.
Yes.
And what one notices right away, and standing in front of the property, is that you can visualize there's a whole street of houses coming, and it's blank right now. So, if this property is built farther forward than the intent is for this zone, you're going to establish a precedent of a property very close, a house very close to the front, closer than our zoning plan contemplates, and then what will happen with the rest of the street on that side of the street? Don't you set a benchmark for something, and does that make sense? Shouldn't there be a streetscape that is the normal expectation for this zone?
Well, I would say a couple of different things. First of all, I would say that in terms of the streetscape, I would have to look at the setbacks of the houses on the other side of the street to see how those were, if those were adjusted for the deficient right away or not, so that would in part dictate the streetscape of the road. Secondly, I would say that this site has to be taken in and of itself. What we're planning to do is, I anticipate we'll still have to get a variance or two, but we're, again, seeking variances. I think everyone else in the street would have to comply with their setbacks, or they would have to do likewise, and secretly from the Board of Appeals. Again, it's really the topography and the lot shape that's dealing with it. I don't know how other lots would be set up. I don't know if there's any actually split off along Westview Place at the time. I think this might be the only one. But part of why it's a problem is the jog that we're dealing with back here, which is , you know, which almost reduces by almost half the width in the one area. So, I'd argue that this is unique. I'd have to look at the rest of the neighborhood to see how that played out, and I would have to rely on, again, anything else that would be built has to comply with the regulations or likewise, like we would be doing, seek a variance.
Thank you.
Mr. Bristol? I have just one quick question.
Sure.
What's the actual status of this piece of property? Is this a building lot, or is this just a parcel?
Well, I would argue it's a building lot. I guess, I don't, it seems like you have a purpose to your question. I guess I'd ask you what...
Question of bees that...
Yeah.
Presenting a project here on this lot, this lot has got some very serious topography, and I'm just wondering, is it an honest-to-god legal building lot, or is it just a piece of property that was split off from the original? And that this may be not a building lot, or maybe just it's a zoning lot?
Well, I guess we're throwing several different terms there that sort of have different meanings. I mean, the lot's compliant, it complies with lot shape, it complies with the frontage, the land area for the zone, so I'd argue that's compliant. If you're referring to the question about the, in the lot split approval, if that's the case, I guess for that, I'd like the opportunity for the ZO to comment. I understand he's not here this week and hasn't provided comment as to that issue, so I guess I'd want to wait and see what his opinion was before we went down that road.
When you return, if you could actually have that, that would be great.
I would love to have a conversation with him about that, actually.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, anything else, guys? Okay, thank you. We're gonna leave this open, folks.
Thank you.
For the discussion.
You confirm we've received notice, then?
Pardon me?
And I think you confirmed really we've received notice.
Yeah, I can, I'll reach out to you and whoever else's email I have.
Send it to me, I'll get it out to the rest.
I'll send it to you when I get the new plans, yeah, I'll let you know.
Thank you for sure.
Okay. Fine, folks, thank you. Third on my agenda, and this agenda, I believe, Mr. Fox sits on Two-Sixty-Nine Palmer Hill Road. We'll wait till everybody leaves.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the applicant Chip Haslam from Johnson, Haslam &amp; Hoagman. With me is Tony DeAndrea, who's the engineer on the project. We were last before you in July, and this is the next scheduled agenda we could get on, and my understanding is that we're up against a deadline without any further extensions available to us, even though this is only the second time you've heard this application. I would love to think that I could convince you to approve this for a final site plan this evening, but I understand, I think from staff comments and from your briefing yesterday, that that's highly unlikely.
I was gonna say, there's an alternative.
And yes, and I believe that what you're proposing is that I offer to convert this to a preliminary subdivision approval, which I think is an excellent idea, which will give us more time to address the engineering report comments, which we just received last week, and for the various departments to review the declaration of open space and the easements, et cetera, and any other issues that have been brought to the fore that you will bring to the fore tonight. So, that's, we will agree to that, and hopefully then be able to, I hope that you will approve it tonight, but I'm presuming you will, as a preliminary, and then we can proceed to final and to address the other issues.
Couple of things. I think it would be helpful to us if on this, on the filed MILR for this subdivision, that you indicate that the sizes, and I finally did find it, but it's not the sizes of those parcels and acres, because it's easy to find them for the lots, and it's there, but it's kind of hidden. So, I'm just, let's just put it on the size of those conservation easements.
Oh, the easement areas, okay. What we could do is, we can do a chart and actually show each one what it is, if that's helpful.
There's, obviously, there's a number of comments from Sauer. We asked for that and didn't get it, but again, since this is a preliminary, this would be some of the things probably we'll be asking for.
Well, we're hopeful that, one issue in particular, which is whether or not the system can handle the addition of six houses, and as Tony's pointed out to me, it's a tremendous burden on the applicant to have to do those numbers. The town should have those because they just put the system in about ten years ago.
I would suggest meeting with the...
I think that's a good idea with Mr. Femil.
With the sewer department and getting them to agree that...
Who I think has also been away this week, but we will do that.
The open space on a subdivision map should not be called open space. It's supposed to have the name of the owner of that space, Homeowners Association, if no one else. And that should be identified, of course, in the legal documents, too.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood that point, Mr. Maitland.
The, I think DeAndrea owns, Mr. DeAndrea knows that.
He's there, he got it.
Thank you.
We're just waiting for the attorney to decide the name of the corporation of all homeowners.
Oh, Lord, we'll see you around Christmas time effects, we're waiting on the attorney.
Right. That's in the declaration there, too, the association will be...
The name has to be there, but it has to be...
Okay, that's fine.
But it has to be on the drawings. I do think we were expecting to get from you a detailed going down through the seven, eight, whatever, there were a number of conservation comments, and we kind of expected that you would come back to us on a point-by-point answer to those comments. There was, there was a question, and I, of all the grading and so forth that crosses over property lines, if there was going to be some methodology in dealing with that, because clearly, unless you're going, I'm just not sure how you're going to do it, where the grading continues through across the property line, since you're not going to develop it all at once.
Right. And we won't know which necessarily sequence will be developed in the lots, too.
I think a process for how you're gonna handle it.
Certainly with regard to the bio-retention basin, the drainage, that's part of the infrastructure that's gonna have to be installed first.
That I understand. I think we also ask you to get, if there is any need for getting permission from the owners, whoever owns this private land or this road, to get access from that road for these four units.
It's six, but five of them will actually be accessing probably, right?
Two off on Palmer Hill.
Prior to, when we met with you last, we'd, I think, indicated that we had a meeting set up with two board members from the association, and that meeting was very positive, and we talked about such things as access and...
I understand. It would be good if we could get something in writing.
But however, I should say, though, that the right to use the lane comes out of the original eighteen ninety-nine deed, and it is conveyed throughout the chain of title either as an impertinence or specifically referenced in it.
Gone through the deeds.
Well, it is, it's an impertinence and a...
Well, we'll go through that in a minute. I don't want to interrupt, Mr. Maitland.
But if you want, I'll provide a memo to the commission on that, on that issue, and where the rights arise from. As I said, it went very well with the association. We don't expect any issue with the association on that, in fact...
If there's any way you can get a letter from them saying that they don't have a...
Well, I think that's, again, that's asking for a third party, though, to assent to what I think is a deeded right. Having said that, we're gonna work with them, and obviously, if anybody were to contest that right and do so successfully, then we would have to come back to you and either as a re-subdivision or rethink the development of this property altogether.
I understand that one of the reasons the DPW is still giving us a do not, you know, they don't accept this, they want the subdivision map or the proposal resubmitted. Their concern is whether you have taken into account in the drainage for these sites and the sizes of the drainage areas, a maximum development of the sites. Maybe, I don't know if my answer's coming forward or not.
Mr. DeAndrea, I sense him looming over my shoulder, so I'll...
And Sauer, that's Sauer.
I think we should take them in order because it's important. When we first designed this subdivision, we met with Mr. Marucci to discuss just this very issue, and what we decided was appropriate, because he did it up on Conyers Farm years ago, and he thought it was a good idea, or he didn't think of it, but it was done, he thought that was a good idea. So, what we've done on each development plan is we've identified the area of each impervious area. So, what that means is, as each lot is developed individually, if we exceed those areas, then there has to be something additional done on the lot.
Well, then you need to, he's still bringing that to our attention in his memo, so...
Well, in his last memo, it wasn't there, but we're gonna meet with him tomorrow at one-thirty, so we'll discuss it again.
Perfect.
I want to just add one more point. We are required to design these subdivisions to twenty-five-year storm. You know that we designed this one to fifty-year tolerances, and that means that we have a lot of excess capacity in our design to accommodate for increases that may occur. So, not only have we identified the components of the drainage analysis, we've also overdesigned it, and really, nothing leaves the site. So, we've covered all that.
One, don't leave. One last question for you specifically.
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, you thought that some of the steep slopes on the property and so forth would be something you would look at, the possibility of putting some restrictions on developments of those areas and so forth, and I didn't see that come through.
Well, we did. We created that easement map which was submitted.
I don't see anything on it.
It was called the conservation easement areas.
Basically drainage.
It was a large area. The map has been submitted.
I'm looking at it. I'm just saying, there's steep slopes in other parts of the site.
Oh, we weren't going, well, one is open space, and then lots number one and two are basically ours, where they're going to need some attention because they are steep, and so we're not setting off anything other than what's already restricted by the wetlands criteria. So, what you have is the fifteen percent?
But let's take the first two lots on Palmer Hill Road. You had suggested where those light green areas are, that some of those light green areas on this map that you presented to us last time would be appropriate, your words, for further restrictions on development and so forth. So, I wonder...
Okay, I don't really recall that I said that on lots one and two, but if it's on the record, then I guess I did, but you can understand how, for the value and the ability of someone to develop and own his own property and use it the way he would like to, further, you know, unusually restrictive controls are not really fair, in my opinion.
Well, it was your suggestion last time, so I'm just...
Which we did, Mr. Maitland, we did cover that area because that was an appropriate area where it was not likely to have any more further development, and it was a good idea to give you some more conservation area. But on a lot that's the... it was a good idea to give you some more conservation area. But on a lot that's the, with the control, with the topography that we're facing, it would be unfair to further restrict that. And I believe that. But then again, we take all of your suggestions and conditions to heart.
As I say, just repeating your words.
Okay.
Mr. Maitland, are you done?
Probably.
No, no. I don't want to go off in a different track.
I'm still looking around. I'm on notes, so go ahead.
Mrs. Raymer can talk for a while, and you can jump back. We'll just sit here. I'll just sit here.
So, Mr. Haslam, I went back through, I think, four deeds. And the two most recent deeds, transfer language like, together with all right title and interest, to the public road and the private road. And that sounded very odd to me, that there would be a transfer of the public road. So I went back to earlier deeds. So the 1946 deed, which is at our page 235, is a different description. And that is, to the center line of Hillcrest, it had a different name at the time. It wasn't, but let me just go to page 235 and-
Well, there's, it was once referred to as Hillcrest Terrace.
Yes, exactly.
As well, and that changed at some point. I can't identify exactly when, but you will see in some of the deeds, and I'm sure you probably did, in the neighborhood, there'll be a cross-reference where it'll say Hillcrest Terrace, and then in parentheses, Hillcrest Lane. And the original map, I think it's 1936, that I also, I think, gave to you, Mrs. Raymer, last time, indicates what is now Hillcrest Lane, was once designated as part of Hillcrest Terrace. So I think that's clear.
So you can't, by preparing a deed that has new language in it, create a right. So what exists is what is in the chain of title. And what I see, this language seems to go back all the way, and, my magnificent glass. It's, together with all right title and interest, if any, of the grantor, in and to the land lying in the bed of any street, road, lane or avenue in front of, or adjoining said premises to the center line thereof.
Correct.
So isn't that the right to that roadway defined? Isn't that a correct, isn't that the legal status?
That may be, as far as title is concerned, but in addition, the original deed out, as I said, in 1889, which was restated again, when for whatever reason, the original grantor received the property again, which was in, I don't have the date in that. But the first deed is Book 82, page 242, Sawyer to Norton. And that talks about, together with the full right of way to and from the above-described property over the 30-feet road known as Hillcrest, that's actually Terrace. Same language is in Book 91 at page 90, when Sawyer conveyed to Nisi the same property. And then you'll notice, when you do, I'm sure if you look at the deeds, the deed history, you will see that it references throughout that, together with all rights pertinent to that property. And I think you know, too, that in Connecticut, and generally speaking, when the law refers to appurtenances, within that definition is rights of way. So that passes with it. I actually just had a case with Judge DeAndrea last fall with that very issue, about a right of way, and it was deemed to be an impertinent, a pertinence to a property, right? And so I think if you take from the 1899 deeds forward, and you'll see that it references appurtenances all the way through. And so even with the language, which later comes on and says something about-
So could you give me the book and page again for that?
It comes out initially of Book 82, page 242.
And you believe that you gave us that?
No, because that predated the 1930s, but-
I don't have that.
But I have it. I'll give it to you tonight.
82, say again, please, page?
It's Book 82 at page 242.
Yeah, and-
And that's the original Sawyer to Norton deed of the 9.338 acres, which comprises the bulk of this property. And then again, for whatever reason, Sawyer ended up at the property later on, and she again conveyed it out with the exact same language, and that's in Book 616 at page 99. I have these. I'll give you copies of those deeds.
I mean, if you just give them to the department, so we can take a look at those. Because, you know, the deeds that I looked at, that began at Book 105, that description takes you to the center line. And so that, that doesn't do it to start driving up and down a road that this property never drove up and down before. So I didn't want to leave that issue unannounced.
Thank you. No, I think that you have to go back further, and again, and so I will provide you with that tonight. I have made copies of those deeds for you. And again, if you look at the deed, the chain, you'll see a pertinence all the way through to the front. So whatever people added in the past, I agree with you. I'm not sure they have much meaning, particularly in the middle of the deed chain, when you have language about together with the right to the road. I don't see where that derives from, other than that, at one point, it seemed everybody had rights to the middle of the road for the property, and there was, but beyond that, I don't see that. And I would agree that generally lawyers can't just add language, or whomever does it, and create rights that don't exist. But this right is, it goes, as I say, it starts from the original late 19th century and goes up to the pertinences.
Anything else, guys?
Did you think of anything else, Mr. Maitland?
Any, any comments from the public? Okay, we leave this open now.
We're going to ask that, we're going to convert, by consent, to preliminary, and thank you.
We should close. We'll leave a note.
So we're closing the preliminary?
We should close it.
Yes.
We're closing the preliminary.
And you need to get the guidance.
Okay. And now we give you the guidance, since this is in the regular meeting. Okay. Okay. So I would move the application to final, with a list of the following comments. To clarify, on the subdivision map, the sizes of the conservation easement areas. Number two, to get the name of the owner of the, what is called open space, removed from the drawing, and get the name of the owner of that parcel. And in addition, those are the things, just to the map itself, but in addition, number one, to meet with the sewer department and clarify the capacities of sewer for these sites. Two, in fact, go point-by-point on all the conservation commission comments and answer them. Number, DPW resolving their comments regarding the, whatever it is that they're objecting to on this, because they won't give us a permission to approve it. There was some discussion, and I don't know, I mean, of how you're going to have, just a methodology of how you're going to handle a construction phasing between adjoining lots. We do know that in the first step, you're going to have to do a lot of work on the site to get in the drainage facilities and so forth.
Correct.
But beyond that, when you start developing the individual sites, and just how you're going to handle that work, major grading, I mean, a lot of fill is going to be put on a site, and it's ending up on the neighbor's property line, and what do you do with it? Are you just going to spill it over into the lot and just-
So I think, I guess we'd be looking at some hypotheticals, then, because, as you say, we don't sure which lots will be conveyed out, right?
We don't know which one, but how are you going to handle similar situations? What will you do?
All right, I'll work with Tony on that and see what we can come up with.
Yes. The other thing was that, no, because these are going to be things that he has to address before he goes back to final. The other thing was, the, did we ever get it resolved, what we're doing with this private road, or you did say that you would at least come back with a letter supporting this, or not, or what?
It's kind of a chicken and egg situation with the association right now. I think they want to see how we do with our proposal to you folks on the subdivision.
You may get, you may tonight get a preliminary.
And this might help, that might help, to pursue that conversation. I'm reluctant, though, to say that I think we need the assent of the association to do it. However, I think this will certainly help.
Thank you. I think that's it.
I would just add a, oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry, not to talk-
So that's what I got. Anybody else want to add anything to it? It's- Do you want to add something?
Thank you, Katie. No, I can't, I can't.
That's right, you're not closed. Okay. I think we've, no comments from the public. We need a second. I've already moved- Second, please.
Second.
All in favor, may I?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is 1 Northon Road, final coastal subdivision.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Larry Liebman from SC Minor, representing the applicants. I have back-to-back applications on the same piece of property. I understand that during your briefing session, you had a lengthy discussion regarding the project. The proposal is a two-lot coastal subdivision of 29.664 acres of, 29.664 square feet. Each lot is going to be 12,600 feet. There is a fee open space that is proposed. There, the issues that need to be resolved, I understand this, is that you need a complete phasing plan. We get that. There's other issues about the refill and the FEMA situation. When I submitted the application, because we're going for something that is, that I've only done once before, which is a conceptual FEMA with fill application, I thought that it would be appropriate to submit it to the agency, since Jody signed off as the community representative, and it's all part of the project. That, too, is a chicken and egg. FEMA will grant a conceptual approval. They won't grant the changing of the flood zone until after the houses are constructed.
Just the fill. Just after the fill is going to be, not, not construction, not the houses.
You can't build the houses unless FEMA has changed the flood zone. The houses you're proposing can't be built unless FEMA changes the flood zone.
There's the letter of map provision for the fill.
Right.
Yeah, not, not the house.
Correct.
Yeah.
The conceptual approval is for the fill.
Right.
And then the lomar comes after that.
Right, for the fill.
After the fill has been installed, and it's certified, the elevation, then you can apply for the lomar.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
I'm curious, how does that work? Do you put the fill in, I mean, and then have to retake it out again to excavate for the foundation, or for the puddings, the basement?
Good question.
Nice process.
Which, which, which is, which is a situation for us that we're not comfortable with either. I mean, we think that that's a waste of resources and time and energy, but we have-
Take it up with FEMA.
Exactly. There's nothing that can be overridden about that. So the first thing that we'd like to do, I'd like to take it from my friend Chip Haslam, I'd like to bring this to a preliminary subdivision, so that this way, then, everything else can be worked out.
Also, the provision from FEMA doesn't expect that you're going to excavate, excavate for a foundation, or, and a basement. You're in a floodplain that's not-
Good for you, Andy.
They don't allow basements in floodplains. You are manipulating the floodplain line and then recreating a basement. They, you know, it's a gray area in their FEMA guidelines.
Well, I think it's something you, obviously, we're on the horns of a dilemma here, and I think you've got to get it worked out so that we understand it.
Right.
I love that expression. Just one of my favorite ones.
I mean, because it, it's, everything you're doing here, from the basement on, as Andy mentioned, wouldn't be permissible on this land unless you have it, you have it in the X-zone. You've got to get it out of the AE zones.
Dennis.
Or you have to waterproof the basement. As Jody's memo said, you haven't complied with that one section of the code, of the floodzone regulation.
Right, or we can show waterproofing of the basement, and-
It's very difficult to show waterproofing of the basement when you've got stairs going down there, you've got, you've got window wells going down to the basement, and-
That would need to, well, that's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking for it to be dropped to preliminary, so that we can reevaluate.
And also, waterproofing the basement creates a bathtub, and your whole structural engineering has to be designed-
For that.
So it's not just-
Oh, no, it's not, it's not just, it's not just a note on the plan that says, "The basement shall be waterproofed." I understand that completely. There needs to be-
Waterproof construction.
Right.
Having done that before in the flood zone, I mean, the concrete slab is quite, quite deep. That's the only thing that'll hold it down.
Right.
When it floats.
I get that.
So you're going to, you want to convert it to preliminary?
Yes, sir.
Yes, he does.
Okey-dokey.
And answer any other questions that everybody else might have, of course.
Okay, well, DPW had on their, again, because it's two things going on here, DPW had some comments that I think you need to get, to meet with them in this phase between preliminary and finally.
Yes, sir.
You need to meet with them, and get them to give us, you know, get rid of that recent, the subdivision.
Prior to final, yes. No, I understand that.
And the last thing, in the same vein as the earlier one this evening, we've slipped back into the old habit of calling these spaces open spaces, and they're not to be defined, they, they're to be defined, since they're fee ownership to, and assigned to a homeowners association, unless the Greenwich Land Trust is closed, or something like that. In this case, that's not possible. So that, that name then needs to be on the subdivision map.
That'll be fine.
And I think that the staff has a couple of other comments about the house and the garage need to be removed, boulder demarcations, and a few things like that.
On the subdivision plan, that's, that's fine. I have no objection to that.
Incorporated into, okay.
And then, I requested yesterday that it would be good to see the overall impact to the neighbors with your proposed new floodlines, and going through a couple neighbors across the streets, because you are moving the floodline, that's what this application is, so we want to see what your calculations, even though it might be miniscule, we want to see what your thinking the proposed floodline is, to make sure we're not impacting your neighbors.
Thank you.
I know we're just, I hope it doesn't feel like we're hammering at you, but the other thing, the restoration plan for the open space, as well as what's going to happen with planting in the future, tree removal. And I think, we're sort of talking to you about both applications at the same time. Did we combine it?
No, we haven't.
We only do in four.
Right now, we're on the subdivision.
Then hold my comment about the landscaping, and only-
I thought you were referring to the, to the open space, then.
I was also talking about the site plan, so just keep that in mind for just the subdivision.
Not a problem.
Subdivision. No, the subdivision, the open space, because it's about the open space.
Because it's going to be a natural area, right?
Because it's supposed to convert to a natural area, and it's currently a landscaped area.
That's what, it's, it's been asked that we give you a plan of what that's supposed to be like, and so that's what we'll have to do.
A restoration plan, exactly.
I'm saying, that's not normally a subdivision item.
Yes, it is, because it's, yeah, it's the maintenance of the open space.
Open space.
Which is in the Declaration of Restrictions, for the, for the open space part.
I took away my site plan words.
Okay, so, do they, when they do the subdivision, I guess they do submit those, the book that goes to legal, right?
Yes, the Declaration of Restrictions, right.
Thank you. Thank you for the-
I mean, it's, it's an interesting point, if I could just bring it up quickly, because when, when we take a landscaped area and make it into presumably a natural open space area, I think we have to be careful, because presumably, you'll submit a plan that, I'm making this up, is, you know, three rhododendrons and four apovidae, whatever it is. And probably not that. But the, but the point is, though, and this came up on the Finney-Noll subdivision, which is why I'm bringing it up now, because what ends up happening is there's a planting plan, and we have to understand that, and note in the Declaration of Restrictions, that that will change. don't get into a problem later on.
I will. That's not a problem.
I made the note.
I can force, I can kind of, I can kind of tell you what naturally should be coming in there and, you know, and if there's gonna be any maintenance to the open space area like if there was, we're not doing that here, keeping a meadow versus, versus woody growth, then we'd allow mowing X amounts of times a year, et cetera, so on and so forth. In this instance, I understand what you're saying and in the maintenance declaration there will be language that will be reviewed by you guys and, I guess, approved by the town attorney, so.
Okay, let's see if we can make a decision on the, on the subdivision. Any comments from the public?
There's just one more thing.
On the subdivision?
On the subdivision. The comment, just so I'm, I think, I just wanna be clear with the applicant that we're, that we're, because we're changing this to a different format. So, our, our staff person said, made the comment, alternatively, the applicant could have submitted conceptual development plans to prove developability of the lots as if the majority of the lots remained in the AE-13 floodzone. That, you, you understand that that's what we're talking about. So, we're not conceptualizing something you don't have. Did you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to be sure.
Anybody else? No comments from the public?
Close it.
We'll close.
I would move this application to final, incorporating the staff comments and the other departmental comments, the, putting the name of the owner of the open space in lieu of the term open space on the drawing, on the plan, including the, a planting plan for the opens, the open space.
Restoration.
Well, the restoration of, but whatever it is. From the existing drawings, it looks like there's a lot of existing trees in there, which I'm assuming will be maintained and it will, it's mostly, I think, the, just the removal of lawns, but whatever. And then, as, as I say, the staff comments picked up things like boulder demarcations, things like that. Did I miss anything?
Declaration of restrictions.
The proposed floodline, the impact to neighbors.
Well, the, the, well, I, I think...
The impact on the neighbors of the revision in the, in the floodlines, Andy's, Andy's request.
You got, did you get that?
On my list, and the declaration of restrictions.
Yeah. And I think the matter of the alternative approach to this should not be necessarily, I, I think just having said that to you, I don't know that we should have that in a motion to go to final. I think that's just something we've said to them and they can choose to do it or not do it.
Do it or not.
Okay, that's it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's do the final coastal.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Larry Lieberman from SC Minor representing the applicants. This is a final coastal site plan for two single-family lots, as heard on the previous To construct these lots, there needs to be, to construct these lots as designed, it would need to be in the Zone X, so that means that the FEMA work would need to be done. The, as stated before, Mr. Fox is correct that we'd have to bring the fill in, get it surveyed, get it to FEMA, then come back and do a, come back and do a coastal site plan again for each individual lot. By right, the applicant has the right to put the fill in the lot in the AE zone. I mean, it does not require any additional work than us saying that we're gonna put fill in. Again, it was brought to you because I kind of feel, as I said this before to staff, I kind of feel like we're being put on the chopping block for being honest and saying this is what we're gonna do to try, to try to do this. The properties themselves can be constructed with or without a basement, with or without, okay, without, without a doubt, they can be done. The merits of each individual lot will need to come before you or come before staff as an administrative situation. We're here before you as a site plan because of the FEMA situation and we were trying to be upfront with everybody of what we were gonna do. I don't know how you all want to proceed with that, but I know that I have a couple of options that I can do, but I'm gonna want, wanna first wait to hear what you guys have to say.
Well, go ahead.
We passed a new regulation that allows you to build these houses in the AE zone and take advantage of FAR and some other items. You have those full rights without bringing any fill. And that's solely your...
An option, sure.
When you, you know, our, my comments, you know, A, bless you, how did you pick the location of the wall and, 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 it didn't like you were, it didn't look like you were filling that much and would it work better if you just spread the fill out more consistently instead of creating a, a barrier to the neighbors?
Well, I, okay, I'll let you finish.
Let me just finish my points and then you can respond to all of them. I noticed that there's some, in our plans, there were stairwells going down to something, but we have no idea what something is.
Agreed.
And, you know, I think that one of the stairwells is, encroaches into a setback and just look at that. And I think, I'll let Mr. Maitland finish because we have a few others.
Obviously, you were talking about the basements. Well, we don't know for sure what's down there because the only thing we know is that there are stairs going down to something.
Correct.
There's a window well down there, or window well shown on your plans, which suggests it's a bedroom or something. So, the fact is, the plans for the basements were omitted from the submission.
Yes, sir.
There were, in, the elevations were not complete. We only got the elevations for one house and not both houses. We didn't get anything on the attic layouts and again, there are stairs going up, so it's going up to something. So, I think the drawings that we got are so incomplete, it's, it's, it's very difficult to, to deal with them, other than what we could see in the plan view, which, which Mr. Fox mentioned to you.
Correct.
Just to making sure that these things are not into the required yards.
Other than that, everything was okay.
Pretty good, other than that, so, but I do, I do point you to the comments from the CEO and he refers you to Section 6139.111D, which is regarding the, the building of occupied spaces in the floodplains.
Aye.
So, if you say you can build it without it, then I think as, has been indicated to you, it's your choice. I mean, if you want to probably move ahead more quickly, you should probably take that option if you wanna wait, because as I understand, there's quite a timeline in here on the lomar and getting everything back and so forth. I think that's not our decision, that's yours.
Thank you.
Whatever you come back with, because I don't think we're gonna be able to even act on this tonight in reality, has got to at least be complete the next time. You know, we didn't even get a section through the house or anything, so it's very difficult to know what we're dealing with.
Thank you.
We didn't get the FAR sheets either, I don't think.
There was FAR sheets.
Okay.
You have...
I might've missed them.
Any, any comments from the public?
Okay, we did.
So, is, is this being converted to preliminary also?
I, I think he's gonna make a decision in a minute on what he's gonna do. I think he wanted to hear from us first, he said. Then he'll, he'll plot his court of...
And, or just being left open, I think.
Before, before you continue with the, then Mr. Thau, on the, the applicant speak? Oh, no? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Good evening, my name's Peter Thauheim.
Raise the mic.
Yes. Good evening, my name's Peter Thauheim. I just wanted to answer Mr. Fox's question on the, why the fill line, you know, was it arbitrary? The FEMA regs allow you to put a basement into a filled area if the salt water is 20 feet away from the basement. So, we opted for 22 feet, to have two feet of just margin. So, that's why when you see the retaining wall go around and like the garage, well, that's a garage, so that's not a basement, so you can skirt a little closer to that. So, we kind of followed 22 feet around the two foundations because they do allow you to do a basement in a, when you've filled and taken it out. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? So, I think we'll leave this open, guys, okay?
We can, we'll delay this matter to the next time, right? Hopefully, there'll be some revisions.
And you're, sorry, you'll give us a full extension so that that'll give you time to...
Anybody else want to say anything?
I just wanna give this to Mr. Lieberman.
I, I got a copy. I did get a copy today, yes.
See, let's just break this off for a second. Is that gonna really make much sense? Because what I'm thinking is when you get the conditional letter from map provision, you've submitted the application to FEMA already. It takes about 90 days, but usually comes in about 60.
And we're in, we're halfway through that decision.
Okay, so you're expecting something mid-October then?
Yes.
From them? And then you would be putting the fill on the property at that point? And then, how is that going to work with the timing of when you're coming back for the sub, the final subdivision? Because...
The final subdivision or the, or the site plan?
Well, we can't, there's not a lot at the moment, so you couldn't approve a final site plan on a lot that doesn't exist.
Yeah, I mean, we, you can't...
It's a chicken, it is a chicken.
So, you'd have to either convert this to a preliminary or, or...
Withdraw.
I mean, give full extension and see how it goes timing-wise or just withdraw.
But they have to have the bills completed.
Right.
You've gotta get your approval bill completed to get your final letter before we're allowed to, to the site plan. So, if you think you can get that done in three months...
Then I have a moment to...
Yeah, please. This doesn't make sense. I'm glad you did one more. I can, I thought I was...
of the site plan, okay? And when we get everything worked out, when we, when we get everything worked out, we will take the normal course of events. If they're administratively approvable, then we're gonna go and we'll file for the administrative approval.
Okay.
And, and not have you guys have to muddy that water.
Well, we like that.
Okay. So, this way then, this way then we can deal with staff and we'll work it that way.
Okay.
Okay, so, again, as the authorized agent is withdrawn.
You got you, thank you. Okay, we're at the public hearing now.
Finally.
The first item is a final site plan and special permit, 90 East Putnam Avenue.
Oh, just pass it down, you don't have to have any...
I will type a few. I know he's bringing a lot of presents tonight.
Who wants a present? Why do you want a present? Tell your birthday. He wants his floor area. Oh. I thought it was your birthday and you were...
Thank you.
You want your floor area, you see? Yeah, maybe. Four. But see, this is good for me, these, because I need as many...
I see the salt water might be, am I crazy?
It's good for you.
Yeah. Okay. The machine was working today, wasn't it?
We were coloring away like crazy. Good evening, Eric Brower on behalf of the property owner and the tenant, Whole Foods. I'm here again tonight with our project architect, Whole Foods attorney, as well as representatives of Whole Foods. So, as we go through to answer all of your questions, we may have different people come forward. So, we've handed out several things, not intended to overwhelm or confuse, but to rather provide clarity and the ability to see it all in one big picture.
I save every time somebody brings us the old buildings, the old regulations.
Well, it's, it's here again just to answer the big mystery question. So, first, the first handout that I gave to you is a letter dated September 15th from Michael Galante of Frederick, Frederick P. Clark Associates. He's our traffic professional.
We haven't gotten that one yet.
That was the first one, it's a single page.
We didn't get it. Somehow it's got stopped somewhere.
I didn't see it.
Somebody held up...
Oh, Peter Levy, what a way to start the new year, sitting on people's applications.
So, the letter, which is coming to you, is from...
Tell us.
Is from Mr. Galante, our professional traffic consultant who prepared the original traffic report. And as you recall, the various options we had for restriping the circulation and parking, there was options one, two, three, and four. Your Department of Public Works was in favor of option one. Your traffic consultant, Beta, was in favor of option one. And so, you were, just wanted the record confirmed that in fact, our professional supported that as well.
Okay, so, I just read this letter from Mr. Galante and it doesn't actually answer my question, and maybe there's a reason for that. My question was, is this the best plan for flow on the parking lot? And all it is answering is whether or not the materials can be delivered, the food can be delivered to the store. And that's a good thing that it can.
Yes.
But I'd like to know if the traffic's gonna get any better and the congestion...
And in his opinion, is option one the best option?
For the, for the flow on the parking lot?
Yes, and that, well, maybe not explicit, is implicit. We can certainly...
A sentence, we, we were really looking for a sentence that said, this restriping, the two-direction, the new two-directional flow, the restriping to perpendicular will address many of the circulation problems and improve this, improve the flow of the whole, of this parking lot.
Ms. Alba?
That's what we were looking for.
If I may, I think what we're looking for from Mr. Clark is definitive proof that the, in his opinion, that the vehicular traffic in this parking lot...
That's another way of saying it. I like that, too.
Okay.
It's the delivery truck.
Says trucks, that's great. Now, we, the layouts here, that's fine.
Exactly. We get that, we're glad the food can come there.
Yes, the transcript will reflect what the two of you said. His letter will say exactly those words. I can assure you.
Will there be the, the plan?
And, and what Mr. Fox said.
Yes.
Will that be accompanied by a dimensioned site plan?
Pardon me?
Companied by a dimensioned site plan?
Yes.
The aisles, aisle widths and the dimensioned parking spaces?
Yes, no, I'll get to that. We've agreed from day one that, that since we're changing the parking, remember originally we weren't doing anything with the site. So, we prepared the architectural plans, interior, exterior. The architectural plan showed circulation based upon a survey that came from your offices. This is actually a copy of the, of the plan that the architectural schematic circulation plan, including the zone line, was referenced and based on. So, we are, we've engaged SC Minor. They will be preparing a detailed A2-T2 survey that will confirm that in fact, the dimensions that appear on preferred option one in terms of aisle widths, dimensions, et cetera, turning radii will in fact work. We've spot-checked a couple of the dimensions from the A2 survey and are confident that there is in fact those widths on the east end of the building to accommodate that. So, that, that will definitely be provided. So...
There was a discussion yesterday about the entrance exit area and some slight tweaking that could be done so cars don't cross.
There was, I mean, there was discussion then. There's been a lot of discussion before that since then. And I think at some point, as several members said, I think we're going to have to defer some of the fine-tuning to the, to the experts. What you're referring to is under the proposed scheme where there's two-way flow out of both aisles, there would be people coming across to make a left to get out, and a person would be coming in trying to make a left to get to the aisle closest to the building, and that was a conflict. That could be eliminated with signage so that those people perhaps actually made a right and moved around. So I think, I think we're definitely on the same page. It's going to be documented. And I think even the comments from your deputy commissioner that just came in shows that everybody's thinking forward and just how to keep an eye on this. And I, I don't see anything negative in his comments. He's saying to revisit it, which has been done on other site plans in the future, and see what's working and what isn't working. So it's the same building, the same store. It's going to be the same people, but Whole Foods is committed to making it work as best as it can.
One of the things that Mr. Michael was mentioning in his, in his letter...
All right, do you mind?
Yep.
Was the analysis after six months...
Yes.
How things are working and, you know, by that time, hopefully, we'll get a real thumbs up that everything's working fine.
Yes, as I said, we've done that on other site plans as a follow-up. We did it on the dance studio over in Cos Cob. So I think everybody wants it to work. Whole Foods wants a safe, viable access, as does the landlord, as do we all. So that part will be worked on. So to move along then, the two-sheet handout that I provided to you, one I think you'd seen before, which was the tractor-trailer loading, unloading, turning radiuses, radii. And then the second sheet, which I submitted to staff today, it shows the, the turning movements of the fire engine that could move through the aisles without interfering with parked cars. And again, that'll be part of the dimensioned site plan overlaid on that. So I think, for all purposes, we have a plan that everybody likes and can live with. I would like to then move forward to the other set of exhibits that I handed out.
Let me, before we leave the site plan and stuff, we did talk at the briefing yesterday about the landscaping in the parking area. Right now, I continue to see these drawings, which, they're just not clear what's going on. So is there...
Yes, any of the, the areas that you have that show that are either shaded or striped, there's a couple of areas that...
Well, if we look at the option one, it's got the truck drawing on it, I think.
Yes.
So that would be the areas, so the areas, that there's the one area to the, to the south, the upper part of the parking lot, which is thin on one side and larger on the other.
Okay.
Sort of a strange shape. The one that's just south of the five spaces...
Yes.
That's landscaping?
No, well, B, I don't think it's realistic to landscape something like that that could be striped, but the areas it shows where you see the double-cross hatching, that's definitely an area that could be considered.
Where's the double-cross? That I don't see.
You're looking at the one with the tractor-trailers on it?
Oh.
It has a...
That's my...
Andy just did that.
Oh, that's...
Where is that double-cross? I don't...
Well, he's, he already answered the one to, you already answered the one to the, to the south.
Right, yeah, so...
So that one you don't think is pro...
No, no, just that little, I don't think that little thing.
Just the little parts.
Right.
The big part is, okay.
That's a potential site for sure.
Okay, now down at, down at Putnam Avenue, all the thing down here in the corner should be...
Yes, that's...
This whole thing, because what keeps appearing on this thing are these old lines of paving.
Yeah.
So the removal of all this paving in here and then the landscaping of that area.
Yeah, that's currently parking, and people actually do utilize it, and I think it's notably the least desirable from safety point of view for cars.
I think, for sure.
Okay, so that area definitely can be landscaped. The little...
The one island?
Right, down...
That is?
Right here?
Yes.
That can be, I think, and again, view would, we can work out with staff and the consultants is, that may be the best place ultimately for the shopping carts or not. There was some discussion, is it realistic to have them up against the building where we're showing them now? Will they interfere with cars? Are they better suited where they are now? So that's a, kind of could go, could go either way.
And then what's over here at the, at the entrance?
Maximizing the green space is...
It's on. I, I think what, yeah, go ahead.
With the parking numbers that you, the parking numbers that you've shown, maximizing the amount of green area and trees, we realize you're going to have to work in where grocery carts are, et cetera. But I think we need to take this opportunity to green it up a little bit.
Yeah, no, I think you definitely have the ability to require that. And I think that, it may be that we can coordinate the shopping carts south of that and have that be green. So that's, so we have green, 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 and then other areas that potentially can be against the building, depending on where the shopping carts go.
I think, I think that's pretty good. What else, what else do we have?
Is, in the winter, with such a tight, tight...
Oh, here, sorry. I'm turning on my mic so you can hear it, because his isn't working well.
In the winter, snow piles, because in the last winter, you lost a lot of parking because of the unusual amount of snow. So especially where you have the area at the back...
I was going to say, why wouldn't you just plow it in there?
That's what, that's what we're encouraging them to do.
Right, I think that's a management...
Yes.
...issue, and it's, maybe with the first amount of snow, it didn't seem problematic because it was going to melt. It didn't, and then it kept, right. All right, so that point is well taken.
Okay.
So I think we have, we green that we can work with. I wanted to just briefly explain the, the non-mystery of the zone line, that was confusing some people, the, and actually, some of us. The, the map, this map, which is in your files, has always shown the zone line. There's many, many maps in your files that show the zone line running through the, the back of the property. And this is, you're looking on your little sheet as a photocopy of this portion of, of the drawing. So the zone line has been depicted there. It shows, calls it zone line. It shows CGBR, shows the R6. And the only map of all the maps that doesn't show the zone line was a map that was included by staff in your staff report from when the Hunan people did their outdoor dining deck. And for whatever reason, when that was submitted, it's in your package, it did not show a zone line. But that was not ever submitted by me or, or team or anyone.
Submitted by Hunan.
Yes, exactly, so that...
And they were more into the, in the outdoor dining area over in the other corner.
So that, that was an oversight, so there's never been any intent to misrepresent what we have here with that zone line. So the zone line has been referred to in different parts of the staff report as having been extended or, or relocated. So if we go to sheet number two in the handout, we have the current zoning map that shows the, the difference between the CGBR and the R6 behind it. And it's generally along the lines of what we have now. If you look where it matches up on one of the adjoining properties to the east, it kind of hits a bend there. And that's pretty consistent with the maps that have filed your office over the years. The original zone going back 1964, or one of the original ones certainly predating the move of the zone line, was the, there was a 200-foot zone line. It was then the BR zone, and it was measured as 200 feet from the, from the post-road. And that then turned into a discussion about, was the zone line moved 30 feet? And in fact, the regulations allowed for a 30-foot-by-right encroachment of the more restricted zone into the, I mean, sorry, least restricted zone into the more restricted zone if you had a bisected lot containing two different zones. And that, that's the case here. And so when you see the, and actually, that regulation's been in effect for years. It came out in 2001, was deleted. But up until then, you could automatically go 30 feet into the, the adjoining zone.
Theoretically, you could go, you could encroach a little bit more on either side.
Well, um...
Or not now.
Not now.
No, actually, when, we'll get to that, how it then morphed in a minute. There's two other things that happened. So that was the legality of the zone line. If you go to sheet four, you'll see the reference to the extended versus the original zone line. And in fact, the, the memo from the planning department references it back in '59 that it approved the, the site plan. It didn't approve any zone change. So it was, the two different zone lines were simply shown, or I should say, yeah, the, the by-right extension. And then in the last sheet, you'll see the staff report from back on the original site plan going back to '93, where there was a not exactly correct reference where it said the commission approved revised site plan, which is true, and expanded the business zone into the R6 zone by 30 feet. So they acknowledged, I assume, that the, that right existed. There was not a rezoning. That line has never moved over the years.
So you're saying that statement, which we have in our packet, is incorrect?
Well, it's, it says, it doesn't say they rezoned it, but that was some people's interpretation. It says they extended it. I think the correct language is they acknowledged the regulations at that point allowed for a 30-foot utilization of the more, less restricted use into the more...
Well, it says then expanded the business zone into R6.
Yeah, well, you can...
I mean, because I think the, if, if a notation to the effect that that was permissible then, and that's what was done, would tidy up that back line. I mean, it's not possible...
Doesn't really...
Well, there's two things that happened. They moved the line, or, they acknowledged where the, the line could be per that regulation. But what's interesting is the, the line that we're concerned about is really the edge of pavement. And when, when you go to the sheet five here, you see the sketch where staff had indicated the 200 feet and then the approximate 230 feet.
Yes.
Well, at that time, you can see, I've highlighted in orange, the pavement already existed out there. So when it came time for the subsequent site plans, wherein a loading dock was added, which I think was in '03, the trash compactor and the loading dock, the, the original idea of having all the traffic going by and parking could not have occurred within the 30 feet. So that, that dimension is shown here as being 30 feet. Highlighted in orange is the edge of pavement that has existed for years and years and years. So you've had...
Since 2003? So in, in other words, when, if I think I understand what you're saying, when they put the loading dock in, is, was it at that time that that parking moved further?
No, no, that's what's even more confusing. It was actually there. If you look at the, the sheet five...
But I'm looking at 1959.
Yes. So between '59 and '94, '03, somewhere along the line, when the staff drew this diagram or annotated this survey to show the 200-foot and the 230, there's no loading dock here yet. So you'll see, obviously, actually, it isn't even striped on that one. So there's an edge of pavement well beyond the 230, and that's the current edge of pavement, and that's apparently what's been there all these years. So...
Well, there is a loading dock shown on this drawing, but it's very narrow. What's happened is the loading dock somewhere along the line got wider.
Yeah, this, these are part of the '03 plans, included within your package, there were floor plans of the, the reconfiguration of the building, and at that point, a loading dock and trash compact area were shown and approved, building permitted and, and built. So, so the line hasn't moved. The building's been approved, and the parking has been in an area with an existing edge of pavement for 15, 20, 30 years on that. We don't exactly know.
I mean, that's, that's kind of the missing thing from the story, is how long has that been there?
Well, it's been there...
If I look at this survey, I can see the dotted lines which indicate paving, as you've, as you've shown them to us in orange...
Yes.
On, on drawing number five. The fact is, we just technically don't, I mean, I don't know, where did this drawing come from? Where did this map come from? Is it dated somewhere or...
This came from one of your site plan files. We can go back and date it. But the fact of the matter is, this predated the big loading zone. It predated this plan, which is actually approved as to striping and circulation after DPW and the traffic engineer went out there. So there's, there's building permits and plans that endorse or acknowledge specifically that. So I don't know the exact answer of when, but we know that this has been approved. The building was built, permits were issued, and there's parking that unless, I mean, the only way, if you want to go back to whenever there wasn't parking here, 1959 or whatever, you're going to lose parking that's been part of approved site plans for many years.
That's fine, as long as it's a part of, it's obviously then just an existing non-conformity field.
Exactly.
So that's, that's acceptable. We were just trying to close that gap.
Yes, understand. And that could have been permissible in 1960 to be able to park there. There were no P-zones. It, obviously, it's, it was not used presumably for FAR, for setbacks or anything. So it's, it could be...
Well, no, because it wasn't rezoned, as the, as the staff comments said. It was, in fact, just a...
So it was either legally permissible or it's now been long legally non-conforming.
Well, certainly, the 30 feet was legally permissible back in the 60s.
And, and you said that that configuration is shown on plans in the building department?
And in your office as well.
Did, so it's a, it's a CO-ed condition, so to speak?
Yes.
And you can provide that documentation?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely have a stop or whatever. I mean, it's, that's, that's, it's here.
And, okay.
And as it turns out, I mean, it's interesting when this re...
And you say that's what's here, that based on documentation, as opposed to just what's in the field?
It's, well, I guess it would be both.
Right, okay, yes.
Physically there. And now, this, this proposed restriping plan actually shows additional asphalt that isn't needed to create this parking. And that's something that, in terms of greening up, that could be removed, simply just put back to, to lawn or whatever. So that, that's another indirect benefit of it. There was suggestions as to how we could maybe reorient some of these spaces, and we could presumably pick up a couple of more spaces by taking these two and rotating them.
I don't think you can now, because it's going into the R6 zone, and we don't have that.
So it would violate, it's, that would be not illegally non-conforming. And, and plus, I think just in terms of neighbors...
Anything else, anybody? It's a dead issue.
Anything else? Anything from the public?
Mr. Heller, I do have a question for Mr. Brower. The cross-hatched area in front of the three handicap spaces, I think it's called, you know, the kind of six, is that considered part of your landscaping? What, can you tell me or explain to me what that area is?
Well, it's, it's certainly, it's not required for parking, circulation, whatever. It can be certainly a combination of green and/or sidewalks. We definitely want to provide access to, if it was simply striped, obviously, it would well suit the handicap spaces. They could just go directly across the striping in. But I think there's opportunities there for landscaping, for cart storage if need be, as well as a future tent application, which we've indicated we would not have part of this application, but come to you separately for that. So that's, that's something we would work with staff as to fine-tuning, what's the best place to get the green.
If I would, the first handicap stall and the facade of the building, actually create a straight line, that actually gets you to a point where actually underneath the structure there at the corner, which is probably the safest access, so you're not actually in the traveled way.
Mm-hmm.
You would should probably consider creating that line as opposed to the one that's shown on the drawing.
So you're talking...
That traveled way is actually quite dangerous.
So you're saying keep a separation from the northernmost handicap space and the travelway?
Yes. Keep that so actually, you can actually walk there or wheel there to the side of the, the tower that's there, as opposed to the front of the tower.
Correct.
The front of the tower is actually in the traveled way, and that's actually a conflict you want to avoid.
Right, all right, now that's definitely the kind of fine-tuning...
If those six spaces, including the three handicap, could shift toward what you're, what you're calling north or to the, to the back of the building, you may have actually a little bit more room there.
Yes, if you wanted to get a planting buffer and access on the right-hand side of the space as you're going out and towards the door, you could pick up, yes, four feet that would get you access and screen.
That particular point on the whole site...
Yep.
Is where everybody crosses in terms of both parking lots?
Yeah, that would get you out of the, it would cut down... Yeah, that would get you out of the, cut down about a third of what people are now walking out in the middle of the driveway.
In the driveway.
I have a question. There used to be, and I don't know if it's still there, a sign indicating that on this side was parking for the stores over here. And it listed, you know, some liquor store and a rug store and so on. So is it clear that those people don't park there?
Yeah, my recollection, and just thinking when I was out there recently, is that it's reserved for the shopping center, was my recollection of that.
But there was a, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any, they have no zoning right to be on this, on this property.
Well, that's, I guess that's the question, is the, do those stores have any right to park in those spaces? And it was just along that wall, just along that-
We can double check it, but it's my understanding that's not been part of any approvals. One last thing, Mr. Heller, I'm sorry, is that Mr. Fox, at the last meeting, did ask for a breakdown and an analysis of the before and after on our different usages of the areas within the store in terms of produce, specialty foods, frozen aisles, et cetera.
Before you get to that, I just wanted to clarify something. You have been using the parking lot to do some display. You have been using the parking lot for display purposes, and I was just wondering, in this configuration, if you want to keep on doing that, having the handicap parking right there might limit your display area. And I was just curious about what you were, what you are thinking about for a display area, and if you think this is adequate space for the-
Well, I think there is, and I think what we'll do is, before finalizing with staff, I mean, we contemplate where a future tent would be applied for and how that would tie it all together. I mean, we want greening, we want handicap access, and we don't want interference.
Because if you prefer that area, then, and it encroaches on the handicap spaces, that's probably not a good idea.
Right. And we'll have that all marked out as part of the details.
One last thing before you go to the inside of the building, just one more on the outside of the building. Are those spaces to the south of the building, or are those all for employees? And how are employees encouraged to park back there and not out in the?
Probably best if I would ask one of the Whole Foods representatives to answer that. Do you want that now, or if there's other questions later on the inside?
I don't really care. You can go to the inside if you want and answer that later.
Oh, here's your answer on the parking in the back.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Ron Brennan. I'm from the store. I'm the assistant store manager. Employees don't park in the parking lot at all.
Or do they park?
They have to use public parking, or many of our employees take public transportation. They come from the Bronx or Stanford or Norwalk. They take the train down or the bus down and walk up from those locations. And those that do either use metered parking, or they park around where there's no meters or there's regular parking. And that's what they've done for a year. I worked at the store in 2004, and it was the same 12 years ago. It's been the same.
Let me ask you a question. Do you know about the other tenant? You're obviously the major tenant here, but I mean-
Yes, sir.
The other tenants, do they park, do their employees park back there, or is it a customer?
They do. Yeah. That's-
Your customers, your employees don't?
No, because we know that our, you know, the other tenants, that's mainly between them and the property manager, but, you know, we would have, we have a much greater amount of employees on staff at, you know, any given time. So we know the impact it would have on the community and the store in general if we were using those spaces.
Just out of curiosity-
Yes.
Do you know roughly how many, how many employees you have there at any given point in time?
Ballpark, I would say on a shift, probably 30.
Okay.
So, you know, morning shift, then evening shift. You know, we do a lot of, we have an overnight shift as well in most teams that do overnight stocking to limit how many people we need during the day, during business hours.
Those people can park in the lot?
They park in the lot, yeah. They come in at 10:00 PM at night, and they're gone by 7:00 AM in the morning when the store opens.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, guys, what else we got? We're going to do the inside of the store.
Yes, all right. So I'm going to ask Jim DeBarbie, our architect, to come forward. I'm going to hand out to you a existing sheet, 11 by 17, a proposed sheet, and then on the cover is a summary, before and after, by department, by square feet, by linear feet. So. My take on it is that it's fairly close in terms of before and after.
That's all I asked for.
Exactly, yeah. Things change a little bit, but do you want to summarize, Jim?
Sure. Yeah, very, very quickly, and it may be easier if you tear these apart, so you could put the existing store, which is drawing four, next to 4A, to see the difference in the store layouts. But what I did first on the eight and a half by 11 sheet, the first sheet, was compare the service case linear footage. Service cases are the cases where the meats displayed, the bakery's displayed, there's employees behind there to serve over those, so the display cases. And you can see the differences. There's no major differences. There's some trade-offs between the stores. Coffee service did get longer by eight feet, but then there were some, even in the new stores, that are smaller than, than the existing stores. For instance, seafood reduced to 39 feet from 56 in the existing store, just on the left. Below that is a comparison of sales area. Tried to give you a snapshot of what's going on in the sales area. Produce actually is reducing about 100 square feet or so in the new store. Floral is essentially the same. Dairy is a little larger. This is linear footage of shelving and display. Inside, I call it the grocery area. Frozen food got longer. And I checked with the Whole Foods people back there, and they said, yes, that's part of the plan here, because they've been deficient compared to their other stores in frozen food. Sales area shelving in this store is a little smaller. And the checkouts, as was testified to at the last meeting, are the same, 11 checkouts. There are several new items in this store. Can see them on the last sheet. And what's being done with this store is, where the whole body is, is now going to become the feature department of the store. You can see at the right side of that plan that we're arranging the bakery and the prepared foods and specialty into kind of a market area. In the middle of that market area, we're introducing a salad bar, a hot bar. If you look closely enough, this incorrectly says there's two salad bars there, but one of those is a hot bar. Hot bar has soups that you can purchase, mac and cheese that's warm, that you can put in a container and purchase also. Also introduced in the same feature area is the olive bar, and there are several other display tables in that area. So that's a snapshot of what's going on in the store. And, you know, it is a larger area, but if you look closely, and I did do a comparison, that the ends of the aisles are wider, there's more circulation area around the checkouts. You can see that that feature area has more circulation area around it. There's, we are taking the toilets out of the front corner, right at the vestibule, moving them back to the right corner, making them larger. So when you look at it closely, it does make reason why some of these areas are even getting a little smaller with this store.
Could you describe a little bit more the front, where this counter is, and there appear to be some other, I can't read the small-
There's proposed to be a counter across the front of this store.
What's at both ends of that counter?
There are areas for cream and sugar and a condiment area, okay? There are no stools proposed for this counter. It's just a stand-up counter where you could get a coffee or pastry.
What's the dimension?
The dimension width-wise is approximately 75 feet.
Depth, 18 inches?
Depth, about 18 inches, yes. If you look at the existing plan, the existing plan does have a smaller counter in it, and currently, there are three stools at that counter in the existing plan.
Much smaller.
Yeah.
And the, I think, I don't know, the outdoor dining, we've talked about that, that's got to be done under a special permit.
Yes, we, the tent and outdoor dining, we will definitely apply to you for that. But just to follow up on the seating, I did a little walkthrough at Cittarella's, and, which is a recently approved supermarket, and they do have at least 12 seats. And so we would, in terms of that counter saying there'll be no stools, it's my understanding that we'd be entitled to no more than 12 seats anywhere, whether at the olive bar or across the front. So that, just to clarify.
Mr. Brower, what is the timing on the SC Minor plan to match the option one plan?
Well, here's, here's the thing, and I think we're down to the real crux, the most important part of this application to Whole Foods, and that's the timing. And this, obviously, like with all projects, takes longer than you anticipate, you have different schedules, people are away for the summer, whatever. So we are at a point now where key to the, to Whole Foods is to get this renovation done prior to the holiday shopping season. And so those representatives are here to plead mercy, as well as explain logistics or whatever it's going to take. But we would certainly ask of the commission, since I think we are down to now just the details, confirmation through staff with this survey that it works. If for some reason it doesn't work, we're not going to get a zoning sign off, and we're going to come back to you with whatever is going to work. So we're having trouble with SC Minor. They had personal issues with some of their field crew that have got them out of the office this week. So we're in a very tight bind. So if there's any way that you could approve this tonight, subject to those details, that would be a tremendous-
Is staff comfortable working with them?
To that end, 6-14A3, which is the requirements for a site plan, and this particular section is the detailed site development plan, does state that a professional architect is one who can provide the drawing in addition to the land survey. So I note that for the commission that we do have that.
Yes.
And so I do think it is critical, though, as you point out, that we, that we do have the SC Minor plan, but in terms of the site plan approved before the commission, an architect is permitted under the regulation to provide the plan at the level of detail you've done thus far. But I think, given the situation with the parking lot and Mr. Michael's comments, et cetera, that it would be something that would be needed prior to the zoning permit sign off at least.
I think what Eric's asking, obviously, is if we did approve this tonight, which they're desperately seeking, they said they're-
Yes, desperately.
Yeah.
That you were comfortable working out anything?
And I think because of regulation-
And also, I think we can do a restriping plan, subject to the commission or the designee or the town planner. So that's another area that we could fall under for authority to be delegated.
Right, that's 6-12.
Right.
Okay.
The outdoor dining that's shown on here is not, you understand that that's not, that's gone?
Gone, dude.
Yes.
Yes, we've only asked you three times, yeah.
Yes, the tent was easier, I guess.
The box on the basement facilities, I know it says existing, and I've looked at the approvals of 93 and 94, and they say no use, other than storage. And I just want to be clear that-
No, that was subsequently clarified in, I mean, in other words, there's no question that our reconfiguration of the use, that came about with the, when the kitchen, when the dining, when the restaurant was being approved, and so-
But it's only permitted in the basement of the restaurant, as I understand it, and there's no, there's no use-
No, we have, we've gotten approval, floor plans, building permits, and certificates of occupancy going back, whatever, it was five, five years ago when the basement was reconfigured. We had to, this was an administrative review, to demonstrate that there was no increase in usable area. So that's all totally documented.
What is it used for?
Oh, it's used for, they have the back offices, there's storage, there's food prep, there's coolers, there's a whole variety of storage. So those functions will remain the same as previously permitted.
And the taking over of the two other locations, the two additional pieces, what is the use of the basement areas of those areas?
That was incorporated when we reconfigured in the basement. Whole body was there, so that use was-
Except that 1,200 square feet was excluded.
Yes.
So what's there? I know that you're incorporating it, I just need, it's just storage.
So it was storage, will be storage.
All right. And do you have any idea what the site plan was? So this, maybe you could reference a site plan, because that's just a statement that this-
Yes, absolutely. It's within the files in Merrick. Actually, I have, I submitted a letter previously with all the dates and titles of what was approved. So that's there, and we can definitely provide, as part of it, a basement plan for the new areas, because it's now incorporated, same storage.
Any comments in the public at all?
Last question to him. You're going to keep the same hours, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week? Okay. For the record, that was a yes.
Okay, can we close, people? Okay, we'll close.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is preliminary site plan.
Good evening. My name is Doug Rich, REICH, landscape architect with the Quill Group in Bridgeport, Bridgeport, Connecticut. With me is Robert Goldman, the architect. I represent Mark Levy and Wendy's Corporation. We're here before you tonight. You've probably reviewed everything, but we've, our application seeks to do some improvements on the existing building. And as a result of the improvements to the building, it manifests some site work as well. Specifically, we're looking to improve the finishes on the exterior. We'd like to put a new storefront glazing systems and doors. We'd like to add some landscaping at the entry side, remove a portion of the existing building that's there, and replace that with an ADA compliant toilet rooms and a new entry vestibule. Part of the architecture would include new exterior downlighting, as well as improving existing pole lights on site, modernizing those. Associated with the ADA compliance, we'd like to, we've, we're proposing to renovate the sidewalks with new ADA ramps. In addition, we'd like to improve the circulation throughout the site. Right now, it's 90-degree parking, which sort of encourages two-way traffic. So we've, we've changed, changed the parking, striping to angled parking, which directs the flow specifically to the one way that it's always intended to be. And that's pretty much, that's it in a nutshell. So if you have any questions, I can answer those specifically.
Very quickly, yeah, the, at the, at the bottom of the drawing, there are three cars parked in a parallel situation?
Yes.
Your drawings show four cars. So your, your parking count originally was down by one, and now it's going to be down by two?
Uh, I believe it was down, if I miscounted, I apologize, but by my mind, it was down by one.
Well, we count differently. In other words, for us, we don't count the handicap parking as, as part of the required parking. So when I say you're down, originally, you were down one. You had a total of 29 spaces. You had a total of twenty-nine spaces, and then you came back, the application was for twenty-eight spaces.
Right.
With the change from three to, from four to three along this one property line, that means we're down to twenty-six plus two, I mean, twenty-five plus two. Is that correct? Because you do show three, four, yes. Well, there's five up there.
Yes, it's possible, I'd have to recalculate those, but I trust you.
It's a mistake.
It could be a mistake, yes, yes, it definitely could be a mistake. I know where we lost one space, and I can tell you about that one.
Well, I know kind of how that one got lost, I think, and I do appreciate the fact that you've restriped that, and that you have apparently added back in the green area there, which was removed earlier. The question is that... Bob, were you able to go there? I'm just curious. Bob and I talked a lot this afternoon about this thing, and whether there were, did you ever get there?
Yeah, I went over there and checked out the site.
That was his dinner.
I did have dinner, I wanted to do, I did a quick seat count, and I figured, two birds with one stone. Seat count was at seventy-two.
So that's checked, okay.
And there were four parking spots along the back. I can understand how, back in fifty, seventies, whatever it was, they would've had five because of the dumpster probably wasn't exactly in that location at that time, so that would've been the five.
Are there, are they, is it striped for four now?
It's striped for four now, yeah.
I, well, we surveyed it, I don't know how we missed that.
The survey that you had, that you did submit, does, granted, it's really light in my, in the staff report, but it does show four numberings. So you may have drawn three cars, but there was four numberings, so.
All right.
It probably was tight.
Two of those are probably non-compliant, but they're existing, they're existing, non-compliant, so, okay. So they're still the same number.
I tried to make this as compliant as possible with the existing striping. That's why I got rid of the one, the one space in front of the pole light with the two ballards. I'd like to put that back in, if we could, but, to bring us back up to where we were, but...
Well, I don't know why.
It's not a compliant space.
Technically, if you got rid of that sort of curb there thing, you probably would have space back there for the four spaces. Just get rid of the curb and make it part of the parking space.
Probably, yeah, I mean, I, compliant, it functions as a curb. I mean, it's just to dissuade people from jamming their car into there, but I could get a space in there.
I assume staff has to park somewhere on this site.
I think they're supposed to park in the back. That was, that was part of it, yeah.
If it's staff back there, then do we care, right? They're not gonna be in the normal flow of traffic and things. The numbers that we had for the coverage, it's non-conforming now, and you are increasing the amount of the non-conformity by a little bit. And we're not permitted...
Right.
...as a board to approve that. Is there any way, if we made it as a requirement, that you would get back to and not exceed the eighty-five point four percent, which is the existing non-conformity? You're at eighty-five point eight percent now. So the question might be, what can you do to that front area up there? Maybe you can increase the, the, the low, the low-impact development area, the rain garden area? Or maybe you can reach, I don't know, because I know you're, where you put that cross-hatching on the drawing? I thought that pavement was to be removed at the entrance. No, I think they're okay on building coverage.
Building coverage, I think, is fine, yeah.
Are you asking about building coverage or total site coverage?
Total site coverage, block coverage.
You can take that out if you want.
I was trying.
Thirty percent. Right now, I'm asking you about at the entrance?
Right here?
Area.
If I remove that?
That's paving to be removed, that's going to be, that's going to be...
Well, right now, it's designated as to be striped, but...
Why wouldn't you remove it?
Well, there's a catch basin here in the corner. We could move the catch basin in the corner if...
Yeah, well, let's put it this way, rather than going to the zoning board of appeals and so forth, and going through that process, it's gonna be speedier for you if you can get the lock coverage back to eighty-five point four percent.
Okay.
Trying to save you some time.
Sure, sure, appreciate that.
Okay, so that pavement will be removed.
And Richard, do we wanna talk about, you know, as you're talking about non-conformities, do we wanna discuss the option of removing a couple of seats in order to basically bring the parking into, closer to compliance, or not the loss of the two spaces?
I'm just sort of curious, were there any problems when you were there tonight?
Oh, no, no. No, I mean, it was, the parking lot had five, five cars in it, and there was nobody, two people inside, out of the seventy-two chairs, and there was one car, one car in the drive-thru. The most difficult thing about it is trying to get around the drive-thru in the bypass lane.
Yes, I know, because when I visited the site, I got stuck behind to pick up...
And the second thing was, the parking was detailed. And so there was leased parking spaces, but he also said that if the parking ends, there wasn't a statement that they had to keep it, and it said that there needed to be, there were available thirty-one spaces on the lot, and that was as against ninety-two seats. So that's, that's the only site plan I know of. So I think that in relation to that, the non-conformity has decreased, because there are not ninety-two seats anywhere there.
But didn't they have that additional parking area, though, that's now the office at that time?
They did, but it wasn't mandatory. In other words, they said they had a lease, and the zoning enforcement officer said that if they no longer had that, in any case, they've got space for thirty-one car, parking spaces on the lot.
They did at that time, and I think one of the problems that we're facing is that back in nineteen-seventy-six, there were different standards for parking.
Yeah, so do you exist?
But that's the, that's what our measurement is here, is that legal non-conformity is as of the rules in seventy-six when there's a site plan, isn't that what we...
Document, I don't know, I mean...
That's what we do.
I was thinking that the documented existing conditions have a non-conformity. And it's those documented existing conditions that are about to become more non-conforming. So if they could wiggle out four seats, which it doesn't sound like they really need very much, four seats would fix it, right?
That's the two spots.
What else do we have beside a non-conforming question?
And then, then they wouldn't have to go to ZBA, then they don't have to go to ZBA.
Well, I think in relation to the old site plan, that's, that's the measure of...
But the problem is, the old one says they, if they lose the lease, they go to the thirty-one spaces.
Yes.
We can't get thirty-one spaces on this.
No, no, but they had ninety-two seats in relation to that thirty-one.
I understand that.
So if you do the math of that, and you shrink to seventy-two, then the parking, I mean, that's, that's when you have legally non-conforming, I think.
Yeah, it would be four seats. Can you get rid of four seats?
Well, that's the other way to correct it, then, if you remove four seats. Then the lease will be compliant with today's regulations.
Now, the other thing that we wanted to ask you about is, so if...
So you can do that?
Totally compliant, but it wouldn't be compliant, but it would be, there'd be no change.
It's a problem, say, and, you know, go to ZBA and get it fixed, and you're good in perpetuity, you know, then you're good.
Robert Goldman, Chesapeake Design Group. Based on the previous presentation, and the question about outdoor seating, I was wondering if that was gonna come up as well, because we don't have outdoor seating now.
No, you don't, but you were, you're, at least the application to us said you were taking the seventy-two seats that you have and splitting them into sixty-four inside and eight outside.
Well, the reality, the reality is that the new schemes for Wendy's and the interiors is to reduce the density of seating.
Right.
So with or without the seating on the outside, we were gonna go down to sixty-eight or so. But my question is if...
You show sixty-four on your drawing.
Sixty-four, whatever, whatever that number is, I apologize. But the question is, will we be allowed to have the patio seating?
If your total seat count is seventy-two, less four, sixty-eight. So you could have sixty inside and the eight outside, you could have...
However you wanna configure it.
Right, okay.
We'll tell you that in the letter.
Yeah.
But that has to be done on a seasonal basis, in other words, you don't get to have, you don't get to maintain...
No.
No, because they're changing their seat count.
Because it's over, in other words, yeah, they're not asking to go to eighty-two or something.
The reality is, is that we would lose seats for, you know, during the winter, that's okay.
Hey, some of us like our winter... Okay, the other thing is, if we were to close it and approve it tonight, one of the things we, is the lighting. You go to ARC, and they're gonna look at the lighting and the landscaping, and you've been asked by the Conservation Commission to try to have more what they call "softscape". And when we all, our reaction to looking at the site is those lights really are huge, very powerful now. I assume that some of that you need, because you're open till one AM.
For safety.
They're going to ARC, and they're gonna have to have that lighting reviewed.
I would, I would suggest that, that, you know, you are open late. The amount of light that you have out there now is, is way beyond what you really need. And that your, you have something that's proposed here, but it's not shown to us. And I would suggest that we not close this until it goes to ARC specifically for that reason, and this is a major change to the building.
This is a preliminary, so.
So we can close it, and just the guidance that you're gonna go to ARC and get the lighting looked at, and then, I lost my train of thought.
Lighting signage, the exterior building.
You're gonna go to the new sign, we looked it up, we know that you've got that new Wendy's sign...
Yeah.
That you're gonna do instead of the old-time one. What decade is that sign that you have now, did you figure that out?
Eighties.
Okay, because we saw the different, we, we saw what the new one... Okay, so you're gonna go to that, and you'll review that with ARC, the new internally illuminated one?
Yes.
And what you're doing for your lighting at night? Because it is really pretty significant.
Okay.
Even a service station doesn't do that much.
This preliminary, you got the health thing yet, right?
No, they haven't gone to the health.
They haven't gone to health yet.
Have to get it yet, right?
So that was the other thing, is before you come back to us, make sure you've gone to health, before you come back with the final...
Quick question, did you, did you decide, what are you doing with the freestanding sign up by the road?
We were just talking about that, I wanted to mention that we were asking permission to relocate the existing pile-on sign from here, with the same sign, over to here, but it would have, be refaced with the new font and the new look.
You wanna just have them talk to ARC about that?
Well, it's ARC, and it's also zoning enforcement. I'm not sure about the setbacks, I know the current existing one, I don't think met the requirement, so.
Yeah, so you may have to fix it.
It's a preliminary, so we'll close on that.
And the ordering window is staying in the same, same location, right?
Nobody in the public anymore, so we'll just say...
The ordering window is staying in the same location, correct?
Yes, yes.
The ordering window and the delivery window?
Yes.
We'll pick it up.
And your hours are gonna be the same.
Thank you. Okay, Fox Hill Lane.
Thank you.
Proposed two-lot subdivision.
Evening again, Eric Brower, on behalf of Chester Woodfield LLC, the owner of the proposed two-lot subdivision. I understand, based on Engineering Division comments, that you would like to see those addressed before making a final decision on this. So we can extend this to the October sixth. We don't anticipate any problem addressing their concerns. I'm here tonight just to confirm if there are any other issues, aside from the hundred-and-ten versus hundred-and-three feet.
Did we get the hundred-and-ten?
It's not there, so we can...
We're going to get it.
Yes. Where Mr. Maitland's referring to, what was raised at the briefing session yesterday, and the dimension here, as the way the regulation is written, you need the minimum continuous yards going around unbroken. This is the first time I've ever seen a side facing a rear. This is obviously a very bizarre, not bizarre, but, you know, not your usual...
Just when you think you've seen everything.
Seen them all. So in the case that this is a rear, and that this is a broken side, you would need thirty-five, seventy-five, which is a hundred-and-ten, you've got about a hundred-and-four. So we'll simply make, we'll just bend this line that way and that way. And so there'll be no change in lot areas or anything else. So the map you'll see will be almost exactly like this.
To the map, again, the open space needs a name in it, if they're gonna give it to the Greenwich Land Trust?
Yes, we've had preliminary discussions with the land trust, they're both, they're willing to accept the fee, the easement, and then there was some confusion yesterday about the third-party restriction of the land trust. And these are the right to enforce. These lot, this property is presently deed-restricted against two, any more than two lots. So this, under the private restrictions, are the maximum. Conservation Commission had a concern that that would be, could be...
Violated.
...violated, or mutually agreed upon by the relevant parties to dismiss that. So we said we have no intention of ever wanting more than this, and that we would reissue a deed restriction with the land trust as a third-party person with the rights to enforce it, since I think you're, you don't enforce, you can't enforce against it. But we clearly voluntarily have said that, and that will be part of the legal document package that you will see before the map is signed and recorded.
I think that's it, I think that the, that the applicant did say that this, twelve seats is permitted within a retail food establishment? And that's correct, and they could have that?
And that they're keeping their existing hours?
Okay.
And there's...
Okay.
A second, let's see if it...
Do you wanna incorporate the ARC comments?
Okay. And I think the only question on, I think, staff is have to decide, I think, if they wanna go... I'm content if staff reviews the park, the landscaping, you may just wanna consult. I don't know what to do about that, exactly.
Because I'm sure they, as they said, they wanna get going ASAP, so logistically, does the commission have any issue with a phased sign-off where we allow them to proceed with the interior work?
No, I think that's perfect.
Even just thinking about the block-the-box issue, I mean, that, that in itself...
All of that, indeed, that should, but that just should, yes, that shouldn't hold up in approval.
Okay.
No.
So similarly, if we wanted them to go back to the ARC for the parking lot landscaping, that could be separate and apart from then moving forward with the interior?
Indeed. Maybe we'll get invited to the Christmas party. I think that's, that's it for me.
Anything else, guys? Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Four twenty-two West Putnam.
This is a preliminary application, so I think that the, that number one, the applicant needs to go to ARC for the review of it, and with a special attention directed towards the, the outdoor, or the outdoor lighting, and just to make sure that, I guess all we can do is just say, make sure that ARC reviews it and is...
Okay with it.
Okay with it, because they'll, they'll review the parking, or the planting, and then they'll review the outdoor signage in the building and so forth.
And the lighting, too.
That's the first thing I said.
First thing you said.
Everybody's missing the first things I say.
It's true.
You gotta wake up here. Just because you were up till two o'clock in the morning with sick children, no excuse for this outfit. Okay, now, as to the, the applicant, currently the applicant is slightly over the lock coverage, and I think if he reduces the lock coverage to the existing, then it remains existing non-conforming. I think the four parking spaces should be returned to the south parking area. Well, his drawing that he presented tonight was three, the plan that we had was four. was four, and I think that they should be made as conforming as possible, so that's about it, I think that's all we can ask there. I think the, we ask that the paving be removed at the entrance, and that the catch basin that he wanted to retain there be relocated, and that's, so that will give us some more green area. The proposal, I think we said needs to be reduced to sixty-eight.
Eighty, eighty, eighty-five point.
Sixty-eight seats.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Total seats, and that's, therefore, that when he wants to go to the outdoor dining, he would make, again, the normal application for outdoor dining, but he would have to reduce the inside seats to sixty, keeping the total of sixty-eight seats.
Well, let me ask you this, since they're permanent outdoor seats, it's not really.
He said they weren't.
No, he didn't, he said they won't use them in the winter.
But I thought that was just implied because they're, because it's freezing outside.
That is.
Let's make it, let's just make it.
Well, let's just say it, it's preliminary.
More than total combined sixty-eight seats, inside and outside, you, on your own, how you want.
Fine, that's good.
I think it'd be good to confirm whether they're permanent, I had said they were permanent, because that was a conversation I had with them a few months ago.
That's all right, this is preliminary.
Exactly, I think, no, I mean, just later on, yeah.
But I think it's, the key thing is sixty-eight, to keep the parking in balance.
Exactly, and then they're good.
Okay.
How about the pylon sign, they asked for, to move a pylon sign?
Yeah, but signs are, that's A R C, they do all signage and stuff, so.
Actually, we didn't, in the A R C review, the third leg of the A R C review is the new Wendy's identification sign, and per Bob's comment, that it also be in compliance, that it moved to be in compliance with our regulations.
Yeah.
And that they go to the health department for all necessary approvals before they come back for final, or something like that, that gives them most of it, you can resell it a little bit, not a problem, I saw that, I mean, I know, they can get hung up on something that's minor, and we don't want to do that to them.
That's it for me. That's my motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to move approval of the September first minutes.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.